I now call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order and note attendance. It looks like we are all here. The second item on the agenda is the agenda review. Is there a motion regarding the agenda review?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
I'm going to call Derek on that. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote.
Derek?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, let's move on then to discussion items. We have a set of policy first reads. The first one is BBBA, Board Member Qualifications. I'll open up discussion.
I've got one. So this was just reading over this and then just from looking at what happened, gosh, was that two and a half years ago with Aaron? And just looking at how this reads, just concerns about members qualifications and if a member moves, even though they've been elected, I know it just, I don't know the legal reason to put anything in here, but to say that somebody, if they need to move or can't move and they lose their board seat, just seems like an interesting one to me. And I don't know if we can change something in there that says if you've been voted by the entire district, because the way that we do the voting is not just by the zones that you're from, it's the entire district that votes. So I'm kind of like, if it was just the zone that forwarded for you, that would make sense to me. But since the entire district votes for all whoever's on the ballot at that time, whether it's three or four of us, I just would maybe like something if a case that happens again, or we just, I don't know. That's my thoughts.
Aaron, you remember this?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, let me just clarify too, my situation too, which was because it was a good example, it was a good work when we had our legal counsel come in and weigh in on that. I didn't move. My district moved away from me.
Oh.
We went through redistricting based on 10-year census data and hired consultants to help us smooth out the zones, the districts and boundaries for each board seat. And I was, where I reside, I did not move from, you know, the time I was elected, but the boundary moved. So now I'm in Derek's, I live physically in Derek's zone, but I was elected from zone five at the time. And legal gave us full guidance that it was from when I was elected and elected by the populace that I should remain in that seat until my term expires because I was duly elected by our community. It's different if you do move because we had something, several years ago when Tim Roth was on the board, he actually physically moved, then had to give up that seat and then had to run in a different zone to where he moved. So there's a bit of nuance to it, but legal did weigh in on that quite a bit, but it has been, you know, we had examples of it, you know, years ago with Tim, that he moved, he had to give up his seat at the next election and ran at that same time, just so happened to where he moved to also had an open seat. He ran and was reelected in that zone.
So if for some unforeseeable reason, and it's not your scenario where the boundary's changed, but you, a board member chooses to move to a different zone, do they then have to abdicate their seat?
I believe at the next election, I think that's the-
That's the next election.
At the next, they can serve their term.
No, at the next election. So it's a four-year term, but if you, you're elected to a four-year term, if after your first year you move, say I was to move, then the next election, two years later, that's, that's when it would pop. At least that's how that was interpreted. I'm not seeing any language talking about that specifically in here.
I don't think this addresses that circumstance.
Right.
I was gonna say, I don't think, yeah, I don't think this has to do with that.
Do we have to, is it, would it, I'm sorry to ask a question, I'm just trying to, is that somewhere else in any of our policies? Or is, okay.
Is that an ORS?
I was gonna say.
That'd be state-driven.
I remember reading something, I think it's an ORS.
Yep.
That was my only concern about this one.
Something to read into, but I believe, I believe it was an ORS that brings a bell to me.
So how about I share this policy with Christine Nesbit, who had brought us the legal advice when we had the situation of the rezoning. I will take a look at the ORS references here that might address what if someone moves in that time. And if Christine advises or recommends some language additions here for clarification, we can get those added for second read. I do think in Aaron's context, given the legal advice, you know, I don't think we would necessarily need a policy change, but given some of the questions here tonight, we'll, we'll get some advice from Christine on this one.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Dan. All right, so we are moving on to 33A2, IK-A, Grading and Reporting System, and it's a recommended delete.
I just had a concern on it as far as it has fairly precise language in it as far as reporting, letting know at the beginning of the year, this sort of thing, the standards and, or the reporting for coursework and everything that would be done and is required. And some of that is sort of addressed, as you mentioned, in IK, but not as straightforward as some of the, IK is more towards standards, whereas this is more towards courses and actual coursework at the high, at, in classes, I think, high school, but all grades, but more coursework. And so I just had reservations about totally getting rid of it or incorporating some of this language into IK if that is possible or something. That's just my thoughts on it. But I think for parents and students kind of need that business there of beginning, they'll know what the grading system is at the beginning of the grade period and that sort of thing. So.
Kind of like we did with IGACA and that ICB where, you know, we were changing some policies. So if there's, if you have feedback on what in IK you'd like to see added to IK, you could take a look at that.
I could. I mean, right here on spot, I could, sure.
You could email me what you think is missing from IK that is in IK-A.
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to do that.
And you and Leslie were the ones who reviewed the policies, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so Leslie would be part of that because I think that's important.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. Okay, I think that probably finishes discussion for IK-A. Let's go to IKAC, High School Classes. Discussion around that policy.
Just one. It's just this sentence in here about some, essentially saying some kids may be excelling at the lower levels and might be eligible to take some high school classes early, but it says it's the policy of the district to allow eighth-grade students. And like, well, that's, you know, what about if you have a seventh grader who really far ahead? I mean, I was just curious about why the exclusion for maybe some kid who's just a prodigy, are they excluded because they're not in eighth grade? I was just curious about that one.
I know that in my district, I was a tag coordinator for many years, and the way the district was heading was the idea that students who demonstrated proficiency, like on the pre-test, right, because all of that's, that's part of this scope and sequence business that we've done here, the curriculum maps and the common assessments is that teachers say, here, class, here's the assessment, let's see what you already know. So say if the student already knows all of the main standards. Well, in my district, I know, and Leslie, maybe I'll ask her if it's similar here, that the teacher gives that student work on standards that aren't in, on that pre-test, because there are so many standards at a grade level that you can't cover all of them. And so that's kind of the trend that was happening in my district is that instead of skipping them up a grade, that they were going to provide instruction on those other standards that they weren't yet proficient on, so that they would master in breadth. Leslie, I want to see what you think.
Yeah, that is correct. And the can of worms that has really made this a big issue in our community is the state has changed the high school math standards so that algebra is a freshman-only course. And so that's where many districts have been struggling is algebra has been offered at middle school level. And we have had a policy where we weren't awarding high school credit for that necessarily in the past. And so this is part of that package of policies around, we just need direction on, we think we want to go deeper in the areas that students haven't received instruction rather than pushing them forward to another grade level. Like Jennifer was explaining, is, is a better course of action based on, in the past, we've been really, felt really strongly that we want our students to be in our high school here for four years and have a full high school experience and earn all their high school credits during those four years. So if we still believe that, then we wouldn't want to push seventh and eighth graders up into high school credit courses.
Now, that being said, I think it's probably important that we do have assessments that might assess those, those non-priority standards.
And to your point, we do have students who are ready to accelerate and have a team working a tag plan, working around them that are also making sure they're getting appropriate instruction. And so it's not one thing fits every student, but it is trying to have approaches that we can really assess what a student knows and, and do individualized instruction, I suppose, for a student that needs something different.
Thank you. Makes sense.
I was curious about the aspect that if they were, excuse me, if they were one of these cases that was offered the credit for the course at eighth grade, then once that happened, why, I was wondering what the thinking behind the credit that they earned not going towards their graduation credits. That's kind of uncommon. And so I was wondering, I was wondering about that.
I think it is uncommon. In the past, I know that four-year universities didn't always accept credits awarded at the eighth grade level. And I did a little research today, actually, and the University of Oregon and Oregon State University both accept an eighth grade class, like a math credit, but they still want, they encourage students to take courses all four years of high school. So sometimes a student starts algebra as a seventh or eighth grader, and my own daughter experienced this. She got to her senior year and she was like, math's not my jam. I don't want to go into pre-calculus and calculus and do all this crazy stuff. And so she ended up not getting her honors diploma as a high school student because of that decision, where she didn't necessarily need to take algebra as a freshman. So, so it gets, it's complicated because we have to play with the university system too. And so now the university system is accepting credits for eighth graders, and so you, you could look at revising that policy as well.
I think historically, though, the comment Leslie made a little bit earlier, I think to your, to answer your question would be a little bit more of a philosophical conversation the board would need to have, because I think there's been a, before my time in the district, it was very much said that we want Silverton High School students to get a four-year experience, not be on a rush to get out the door and graduate. We want them to get all the credits from Silverton High School to exit and not try to accumulate credits, you know, in middle school to exit early. So it was very much, at least, I'd have to do a little bit more history digging into that, but that's what I was told, that historically this district has wanted kids to earn all their credits at Silverton High School to have a full high school experience. So it'd be a little more philosophical discussion for the board to have.
And when, along those lines, in our, in our district, if a student shows the abilities, are they, is there a possibility for across the board or just certain subjects as far as even taking classes early?
The unique makeup of our district can sometimes be difficult for a student in a K-8 school to either get to the high school to attend a class here, or for a teacher to be highly qualified to teach a high school-
Right, to meet the high qualified standard, right.
To teach a high school course. So that's, that's sometimes a barrier that, that we experience. We have been able to make it happen in the past for some students. Even, we had a student at Central Howell in middle school last year who came in to the middle school to take band, because that was a really important subject. And we figured out transportation for that. So there are unique situations where we've been able to make it work.
What I, I guess what I was getting at is, is how real a problem is it, you know, are we talking a credit or multiple, potential for multiple credits, I guess is where I was dealing with that. As far as, you know, if we're talking just a credit, doesn't have that big an impact on that cumulative high school amount of credits for graduating. But if it's across the board and there's, whether it happened or not, but the possibility of getting almost a year's worth of credits, well, then that definitely what you were talking about comes into play then.
I think math is probably.
I think it's pretty much math.
Math, yes.
So, I would for one, if they meet the standard, meet, get, if they've earned the credit, I think they should, they could count towards their graduation credits. But that's-
But that would be another discussion, right?
Yeah, I mean, well, it's in first read, so I think part of it was just a minor change in the language and the OSBA update. So I think that there would need further discussion at the board at the second read possibly to determine that.
What do you think, board members?
Honestly, I think the time, I mean, it's, it's an interesting thought, as doing grad school and seeing how credits transfer and stuff. So not jeopardizing the kids' credits going towards higher-level education would be something we'd have to really look at, like, are they even going to accept the credits? But then, the one-size-fits-all model for kids, that all their credits happen through Silverton High School. I know there's some kids, was interesting with COVID, some seemed to excel online when they were doing worse in schools. So I don't want to penalize kids because they might learn differently. So it's, I think it's a really, a larger discussion than we could decide here. Something to think about.
I'd want to have a recommendation from our staff because I feel like I'd just be conjecture.
Yep, agree. I'm not an educator. I don't, yeah. Good point.
Good. I was gonna say, as long as the policy I think allows, because it sounds like these are real one-offs, and so as long as we provide general guidance and then as these very unique cases pop up, there's a little bit of flexibility, which it sounds like historically there has been, that's what I would just want to count for, is the nuance, one or two offs, because it doesn't sound like it's popping up all that often. So.
I have to remind one was, I think these are exceptional type, you know, you know, exceptional students, right, or have special, exceptional cases where that they, they're able to excel. We're going to go to math because that seems to be the common one.
Right.
But there's always exceptions too. I mean, my daughter took health online through BYU when she was here at high school because the way her schedule was, she had to do that in order to fit it all in. There's always exceptions. And I think need to be free enough and, and open enough that if there are exceptions, we have them. But they're, they're just that, they're not exceptions, they're not the rule. But I think we need to, if we can accommodate for that from staff, great.
So maybe we will do a little bit more research, see what other neighboring districts do. But then to Owen's point, I think it probably would be helpful to bring forth a staff recommendation of what we think is the appropriate policy to bring back at the second read in December.
Yeah, if that works for you all. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, well, that concludes our policy first reads unless anybody's got any last minute. Okay, nope. Let's go to 3B, the budget update. Is that for me, Steve?
Thanks, Jennifer. I just wanted to say a couple of words, if I could, about budget. We will start having budget briefings regularly at board meetings and board work sessions. I think it's really important. We've got a couple of things going on, one of which is ending fund balances in the six figures now. So we do, we do have a plan for getting our reserves up to a healthy level, but we had also talked to the board even before, to the former board, that this would be coming, given the contracts that we needed to settle and everything else. It's a good thing we did settle those contracts because right now we're in a totally different era. And, and we don't need to negotiate until the spring of 2025, so that's good. We're hiring teachers now with more experience than we ever have before. That's a really good thing. Our hiring practices have, have really improved and the way that we search for teachers, the tasks that we have teachers complete to demonstrate proficiency to us before they're hired, all factors into that. The only downside to that is they're more expensive as well. So we have to budget for that also. And inflation is still out of control. And we have not sure what the future holds for us in terms of that, but we do need to take a more aggressive stance in aligning our expenditures with our costs. So Steve's going to brief you today, and we will follow that up with a more in-depth briefing during regular board meetings, but that will be a staple of our agendas going forward.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. We're finishing our audit now. It doesn't look like we'll have the final audit report in time for the December meeting, so it'll probably be presented in, in January. But we're through all the field work and waiting for that draft to review. And I also need to write up the management discussion and analysis. But we had budgeted or projected back in the spring that our ending fund balance or beginning fund balance going into this year would be about 1.5 million. That was a very early projection. Obviously, we were just settling with the teachers at that time. And so there was a lot of, a lot of unknowns even for the spring. We went through most of the school year last year without knowing exactly what we were paying our teachers, and that's happened too with the last four fiscal years. So, so that was a bit of a guess, but it looks like we're going to be closer to seven to $800,000. So we've, over the course of five years, gone from about a 12% reserve to about 2% and maybe even a little less than that. So obviously, it's, it's been a rainy day for 46 months now. I count back to January 13th, 2020, for those of you that weren't on the board until July 1st. If you go back to May 11th and May 25th, budget committee meetings, especially May 11th, there's a 33-page presentation that I gave that recapped the 40-month roller coaster we had been on and the impacts to the budget. And there's also a video of that meeting if you'd like to watch it. So I'm not going to go over all those points, but I did want to bring attention to some new developments since we entered this school year. Scott brought one of them up. For the first time in my 23-year K-12 business official career, we have brought in more experienced teachers for vacated positions than new or rookie teachers. Usually when we budget, you know, we budget on an average, you know, teacher cost, usually you don't have to account for step increases. And the reason for that is a lot of people have topped out or bottomed out on the scale. And then the people that haven't would be eligible for their step, which usually is around 3%. I'm not sure on the new scale now, I don't remember. But usually because you have people that have retired, more seasoned folks that cost more and you're bringing in newer teachers, usually the cost of step is kind of covered through that, that attrition. Well, that's not the case now, and that's just not something we anticipated. And like Scott says, it's, it's a good thing. I mean, it's great to have a mix of experienced teachers and also newer teachers at all the buildings. But that's just something that we have to assume is our, is our new normal. We're hearing that we are, I think we always have been, an attractive landing place for employees, families, students. But I think that with everything that's gone on, we're hearing more of that even, especially from people that have come from, you know, from Salem. And then, of course, you know, the reason I count back to 40 months is, starting in January 2020, when we settled with the teachers on that agreement halfway through a school year, that's again, it happened to be two months before the pandemic, which of course we didn't know was going to occur. So that's why I counted back to that. So it's now been 46 months. And from January through about the summer, or slightly thereafter this year, we've settled four, four agreements, two with each association at some, you know, pretty, pretty heavy cost. So that coupled with losing 10% of our enrollment, you know, obviously, as we've talked about, we were able to keep our heads above water with reserves, but also the ESSR funds, which were great, but ESSR III was only funded at about a third as much per student as some neighboring districts. And that was, I think, due to, you know, a formula that probably wasn't thought out very well for the pandemic. And then we did, you know, pursue two FEMA claims, one for the ice storm and then one for COVID-19, which a lot of districts didn't even try because they were, they were building that plane while it was in the air and it was very difficult. And then also the pension obligation bond and, you know, other efforts. But again, as we started this year, we've seen a change to teachers coming in at a higher cost. And then the inflation element that Scott mentioned, one specific example is, you probably all have seen on personal level as well, PGE is increasing their rates by 17% beginning January 1st of this year, which is right in the middle of our fiscal year. And obviously, there's a lot of other factors as well.
Do you have a number with that's going to increase for our district?
I don't have a-
Okay, I'm just curious, like, it's $150,000 more, you know?
So, you know, I'll give a more detailed presentation that couples the audit reports. And we're certainly, we'll talk more, you know, about the budget before the official process starts. But we're also taking some actions now. And Dan's going to talk about some, some HR things we're doing. But in addition, we've had a few meetings with principals in the month of November and tomorrow at our admin meeting with them. We will be instructing them to have some formal conversations with their staff at their schools this month so they could start going through scenarios and having a collaborative effort and really kind of kicking off those conversations now. So I'll let Dan kind of expand on a couple of those actions that we're, we're taking.
So I hesitate to use the phrase hiring freeze, but we have said no to some positions that we thought that, you know, A, the school year's already started, what kind of candidates might be available. We need to tighten our budget. We've been talking with admin about that since the summer. And so we have not approved certain positions that we think that we need to try and do without. We need to start people, getting people to think about how to do with what maybe they used to be having. So again, not formal hiring freeze, but we have paused on a few positions. I think the strat, one strategy we're using right now, when we do have a position in the classified where you see a little bit more mid-year change, you don't see a lot of changes in license, but in classified, where if we do have an opening that is highly critical or determined to be maybe a higher priority, we are posting those jobs in district only, seeing, and it's a little bit more of a domino effect of, of, of someone maybe seeking a different position, and then is the position that's vacated, what level of priority is that at? And, you know, and then just kind of eventually getting to a place where, okay, this position, whether it's one step removed, two or three steps removed, this position's not getting filled. And so our principals have been very much team players in this process, meeting with them to say, you know, and then they're quick to ask, you know, do I get to post this one? And we're like, well, here's, here's what we can do. We're going to do this, but this position over here is going to be left unfilled. And they've been really great about partnering in that. So, so again, maybe saying no to some positions right now and then using that strategy, especially in the classified ranks, to eventually get to a position that's not going to get filled. Those are some steps we're taking right now. To echo what Steve talked about, we ran the principals through several scenarios to get them thinking of processes that oftentimes happen in the spring about what, what would you do if this scenario hit your school or you had to, you know, be one less teacher than you had before, something like that. To, I think what Steve pointed out, principals were really anxious, can we do this with our staff? They wanted to bring that back to their staff. We need to be doing this with our teachers and our, and our classified folks. And we said, you know, let's get to tonight's board meeting, let's talk about it publicly. But then our ask over the next four- But then our ask over the next four weeks before winter break is that they run their staff through similar scenarios or share back to us what did they, how did they communicate this to their staff before winter break? We want, we want this to be started in the discussion. And then I think that one last thing to leave you all with is, you know, if you think back to this, the, not this last fall, but the la, the fall before that, we got, you know, we had some last summer pressure about hiring and bringing back some positions. And if you were on the board, you remember I'm seeing some heads nodding across from me. And so, so for instance, we had some, last fall, we had an enrollment boom, a little last-minute enrollment at Robert Frost. And so, we ended up adding some teachers there. And given kind of the tumultuous season that Robert Frost has had and whatnot, we decided to, "Hey, let's, let's leave some, some FTE at those lower levels." It, because we didn't wanna repeat that going, "Let's, okay, well, you don't have the numbers, so let's, let's move people around and then those, have those, let's say kindergarten show up again." And so, and so basically, we're gonna have to be analyzing some of those hiring, those staffing decisions that we wrestled with a year ago to go, is that, can we really afford that FTE? And when we say FTE, those class size ratios. And so, we want it, something that we wanna bring back to you, you know, throughout the next few months of looking at some of those class size ratios to say, "Can we really afford those at what they're currently staffed at?" And prepare you for some of the advocacy that will come out, because we faced that a year and a half ago and we're not gonna be sitting in the same situation that we were a year and a half ago, so.
So a couple other points that I, that I meant to mention is, while expenses are more than we, we anticipated this year, revenue is also higher because we did get another nice little kick in enrollment, so a little higher than, than what we budgeted, so. But, but, but still not enough to, to get that, that needle moving the other way. And, and of course, this is the funding, 49% funding here for state school fund as well. Next year is 51%. So, I, I really truly believe we, we have to do everything we can as we finish this year, you know, to save and cut back. But as we budget for next year, it's the 51% funding year. You know, again, enrollments, you know, we, we have been blessed with a better enrollment recovery than, than a lot of other school districts. We're not, not back to where we were, of course, and we weren't planning on that at all. But, but, close to half now, I think, that we lost. And we also know our employee costs through the 24-25 school year. So, as we head into that higher revenue year, knowing our costs and as we build another budget, I think that's where we really, really have to make sure we make a significant swing, you know, in the other direction in the second year of the biennium. You know, this is, is, is just an estimate at this point in time. Again, we get the higher revenue year next year, but I believe that we, we need to look at the possibility of trimming the, the expense side of things in the general fund by, at this point, I would say 4% to 6%, which would be 2 to 3 million dollars. Obviously, this has been a pretty common conversation. You know, you've seen in the news, you know, Salem Kaiser was, what are they talking, was it 38 million? So, you know, you're, you know, Portland obviously is gonna be, you're gonna, and they even have a local option levy, so. Portland does. So, most districts are, you know, faced with the same situation and that's, you know, that's the reality. The, the one other thing I wanted to say about what's kinda new and different this year is paid leave Oregon unfunded mandate is really quite expensive. So when somebody goes out on paid leave Oregon, you have to bring in, you know, another staff member, pay them and while you're not paying the, the, the staff member that's on leave, we're still required to pay their insurance benefits. So, in a lot of situations, you may have possibly a, not always the case, you could have a younger teacher, it could be anybody, but there, there are situations where we have an employee that costs less and someone that's willing to come in for a short period of time that's retired and is at a higher pay level. And plus, you're paying the benefit of the person who's, you know, out on the leave. So, so that's just another thing we've gotta, gotta get built into the, the budget. You know, that, that program just kicked off. Also, the state is even more, more friendly on awarding unemployment benefits than they already were, which is actually kinda hard to believe. But, you know, we offer, you know, 10-month employees' summer employment opportunities. They turn them down and they can still file for unemployment benefits. So, we do have a separate unemployment fund, but it's really the general fund that's kind of funding that in a separate internal service fund. But, it just, every little bit counts, so. So I think that was all I wanted to mention.
Hey Steve, I got a question. So, it's good to know that teachers that got a good resume are choosing here. That's a good, that's a good sign. In the budget, there, there used to be an experience, they would, the state would fund us more if we have a more experienced teachers. Does that make, make, makes up for some, but?
Thank you very much, Tom, for, for being there. That is absolutely true. There's a, in the state school fund formulas on our page that we put in the budget every year with our estimate on it. A part of the formula is average teacher experience rating, I, I think for the state was, I think, 11. And we're about plus to 13 or something, so yeah, it, we do get a bit of a revenue bump for. So, so there is a bit of an offset. Clearly, it's not dollar for dollar, but it does help, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And, and that's good, because otherwise, it would incentivize districts to run off expensive teachers.
Right, yeah.
I just wanna say I appreciate the, I know, I've been, from following along, this has been the plan for a while. And I appreciate the transparency in which the, the principals and district-level staff are, are bringing this to us, because I think it's important that we have a long launchpad, right, to, to really understand going into the budget cycle this year.
Absolutely.
Tool that we're gonna have to also bring back is making sure it's updated is that class size dashboard is gonna really be helpful so that when you guys are forced to, when we're all kinda forced to make decisions, we can be using that tool to be able to look at what kinda classes we're looking at.
And that's, that's up to date right now, right?
You know, I haven't looked at it and I don't know its synergy, if it's pulling real data or not. But it, it should be a, you know, if it's not, we will make sure it's getting, it's still up and running.
Because I do pass that along to people all the time. I've got it bookmarked on my phone.
We will make sure it is up to date.
One que, I assume it's a given, but I gotta ask it anyway. I would assume that when we're looking at possibilities, that we're looking at this district-wide and not just building and, and central office everywhere. Everywhere, so.
As much as it gives me heartburn to see that, you know, our ending fund balances in the six digits, I, I do feel that after what we're hearing out of Portland, Salem, that we're gonna, never, ideal situation when you have to say, "Well, we're gonna have to tighten our, tighten our belts or we're gonna have to make adjustments or even staffing, you know, decisions." But the fact that we're at where we're at, I think, is a big testimony to our leadership. Steve, your team, Dan and Scott, it's a reflection on the proactive measures we've taken over the last three, four years, you know, that once pandemic hit and, you know, again, the, the pers refinancing, the, the, going after every grant that we can and trying to do everything that we can do to proactively save money during this time is, it's paying off. We're not where we wanna be. We're well under where our board mandated reserves are to be, but we're not nearly in the dire situations. And I'll go back to Salem Kaiser, because I saw the statement that their superintendent put out that they're having to make dire drastic cuts.
They've started now.
Yeah, and they already started, which is really bad. So, the fact that we're, we're working on this, we're being much more, I think we're in a proactive kind of mode here. We've done a great job monitoring things over the last few years. So, you know, again, compliments to you and the staff to, that, over the last few years, done such a good job to try to keep us in the best situation we can, so.
I just wanted to mention how impressed we've been with our principals and understanding that we are a school district, not just a district of individual schools with special interests, that everybody understands that this is a global issue that we need to, to take care of and tightening our belt and taking a look at every aspect to save money. That's really impressive, that how open our principals are to creative thinking and it's, just like Dan said, they wanna get with their staff to share that same information and start working through scenarios of coming up with the best plan possible that, that really, that helps each individual school, but at the same time gets at our mission of building back our, our financial reserves. The other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, negotiations took 12 months on the, on the certified side. And working with the board so closely during that entire year of negotiations to try to bring a deal together that made sense, that wouldn't send us into insolvency, was so critical. And, and it takes time, as you know, but, and then so much of that time was spent trying to come up with ideas and thinking around, how do we get to a place where, where we're doing right by our teachers, but also doing right by our district, making sure that we have a sustainable financial plan going forward? Because that is really what has been draining down the, the reserves, are, are the contracts we've had to settle. So I just wanted to say, say that. I, I feel really good about where we are, but we know that, you know, being in the six figures for financial reserves is not enough.
I'd like to piggyback off of Aaron and Scott, like, very grateful for the work Steve you've done, Scott, the teams, Dan, the unions, that they, everybody came together for the district and can't imagine the amount of hours that that took. But, thank you to everybody that was involved that helped out, because it could be much, much worse. So, thank you.
Any more on the budget? All right, let's move on then to 3C superintendent goals.
So I, go ahead Jennifer, sorry.
Oh, I'm assuming bond election analysis is part of your goals.
Yes, it is. And so what I'd like for you to do, board, if you could pull up the link that was emailed to you at 6:45, then you have this in front of you and when we get to the end, we can transition really easy into the analysis and, and the draft of that. And, and we have an activity planned as well to get some additional thinking there. So, go ahead and look up when you're done and I'll know you're ready to go. We good? Yeah, okay. So I'm gonna try to do this facing you instead of up there at my computer. It's always kind of a trick to work between both of them. So, if you wanna know what slide we're on, it'll be this one here. That's the one I'm working on, right here. So I just wanna go over the progress towards the goals I presented to you this, a few months ago. And really, that's directly connected to our strategic plan, a five-year strategic plan. So I'll go over the first two are really a 1A and 1B centered around teaching and learning. And then the third, the other third of our strategic plan is on facilities. And so I will end with facilities and then we will move right into our analysis. And, so just to give you a picture of, of what this will look like. So, starting with our strategic plan, it's really important that we all take a look at that, that we have three goals. I'm really thankful that our board at the time, working with, working on the new strategic plan. And Daniel, I don't think this, there we go. That we have three goals. I, I've always felt that anything more than three goals is way too many. This allows us to focus. And 1A and 1B are really around each, child being on track to graduate, but also this whole idea of social emotional skills that at that time in developing the strategic plan was new for all of us. And so really, what I'd like to see in the future is to have those incorporated somehow together, because you can't have social emotional learning without the academic piece. You can't have the academic piece without the social emotional learning component. And so, when we have a strategic plan, then we gotta boil it down to a focus. Daniel, can you, can you help us with this? It's not, this, there we go. We need to boil it down to a focus. This is our yearly focus here. Anyway, this isn't working, I guess. This is our yearly focus. It's broken down into three areas, just like we had three goals. And it really gets at what we're focused on for this school year. And it doesn't change a whole lot, as you know, because the, the strategic plan is for five years. This is what we're doing in terms of actions this school year, 23-24, to further our work towards meeting the goals of the strategic plan in 2025. So, when I first got here to Silver Falls in July 2020, we were going through the beginnings of the pandemic. We didn't know how long it was gonna last, but we did know one thing. The kids were gonna be horribly behind once they came back to us. That was for certain. And we looked straight into the future and we decided we need to do something right now so that all of our actions will pay off in the future once we get kids back. And that's really the idea around all of our work in curriculum mapping through the pandemic to this point here. And a guaranteed and viable curriculum simply means that all students have access to high-quality standards, that the same standard, so if I have one teacher A, I'm gonna get the same, be taught the same standards as if I go to teacher B. And we know that because we have a curriculum map that maps us all out during the school year to say, "These are how many standards we need to teach, this is the time we have to teach them, this is when we'll assess them." And all of our teachers are on the same page, so we can make that promise to our community that when you send your child to us, they're gonna get a full year's worth of, of curriculum. And that's really what, what the on-track-to-graduate strategy is all about. And this is totally throwing me off. I don't know why this is, let's see.
That's it? That's the next one?
No, it's going the other way. Anyway.
There it is.
There you are.
Nope. Anyway, I'll go, I'll go here, so I'll go to slide four now, so. So, what matters most in raising teacher or student achievement? Well, we look at research. We don't just pull these things out of thin air. And the most current research, the depth and breadth of Hattie's research on the top 200 instructional strategies that make a difference for kids. All the way at the top, you'll find teamwork, which is the fancy word there for collective teacher efficacy. And that's what you also see in professional learning communities, PLCs. Every teacher in our school district is in an appropriate professional learning community. And in that professional learning community, they plan instruction to meet the standards, given the set of students they have, with assessments that go back to those standards so you can answer the question of, what we intended to teach, is that the same as what kids learned? So is what we intended to teach the same as what kids actually learned? That is such an important question to answer and unless we're mapped out with standards and standards-based assessments, we won't know. We can never know. And so, as you know, last year, we hit a real milestone with being the only district in Oregon that's trained every single one of our teachers in, in assessment literacy practice. That 30-hour week of assessment literacy that Leslie worked so hard to put on and, and we were able to meet that goal last June. And so that all goes back to where we are now in year four of a five-year plan, which is here at full data team cycles. So that's really where we are now in terms of my goals and teachers working together to answer that question, is what we intended to teach, does that match with what students actually learned? And we are here and our teachers have received this initial training and full team, full data team cycles. And most of our elementary teachers have already been through one full cycle of assessing students on what, exactly what they were taught with a standards-based assessment that that teacher team created. They take that data, come together and make adjustments for how they're gonna move forward. Who got it, who didn't, what's the plan for the kids who got it? What's the plan for the kids who maybe need a little bit more? What do we need to think about next year when we revise this instructional plan? Where do we make? Where do we make note of that, so in the spring, we can make the revisions? And so I just want to point out here that, of course, this is, this is really, really important work, but it would have never happened without this work here in the beginning, during a really difficult time. And so what you find throughout the state is that most school districts are starting right now with developing a plan, knowing full well that it takes a few years to implement something like that, and to really get going, and to make sure teachers are trained and have the time and resources to do, to do the work. So I just wanted to point that out, that our teachers deserve all the credit there, and our principals as well for making sure that they lead the work. This is the goal for guaranteed and viable curriculum, and you can see that it's broken out into adult actions, and then I have results indicators on the right. And you also see that in my goals, they're action-based. So, action-based goals are far better than just numeric goals, because if we focus on the behaviors, the other things will come. So it's kind of that saying of, you're always perfectly aligned for the results you're getting. Well, that alignment needs to come from our behaviors. Are we aligned as a school district in our standards-based model? Are we teaching the standards? Are we assessing exactly what we teach? Are our teachers in professional learning communities, are they making the instructional decisions based upon best practice and research? All of those things. So you'll see that the green here is, are the things that I would say are pretty complete, even though this is never complete work, it's always a work in progress. But we have consistent implementation of projection maps and unit maps in every single one of our schools, K-12. That's huge. And down here, all teachers have received professional development, completing full data team cycles, and in utilizing student engagement strategies. Grade six through 12 will start the full data team cycles in January. And so we're looking, looking pretty good there. And then our results indicators, every single one of our PLC teams has a focused agenda, and each team implements norms. That is absolutely critical when you bring together teams of people. Because when you have passionate people in the room, opinions will vary, and how do we get back on track and make sure that we're really staying focused on the right work? And then, of course, we've, have a big focus on our walkthroughs with principals, where principals are really taking ownership of what's going on in every classroom and just touring us through the classrooms. Without us going in, we're really a guest of the principal in their school. We want to see their good work. We want the principal to show us what we should be seeing in terms of what kids are actually learning, how their learning is being assessed, and looking for artifacts and evidence there. And then after our visit, Leslie and I usually go, Dan comes a lot of the time, sometimes Brandon, we hand that data just right back to the principal, so that they know that it's for their learning as well. Any questions on this before I continue?
What are the green?
That just means I, we're completed, we've completed those, even though it's never truly complete. But I couldn't find a checkbox in PowerPoint, so that's the reason, so I colored it green. All right. The other goal that we have is, is social emotional well-being. I call it sense of belonging. And sense of belonging all starts with knowing exactly where a child is, what a child needs to be successful, and starting to build a community based upon that. And so you may have heard this acronym MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. That is the other component to a guaranteed and viable curriculum. That is the yin, and the other is the yang. They go together. You can't have one without the other. And so when we work on a standards-based learning model, that's good for about 85% of our kids will do just fine. But we know 10% of our kids will need something a little bit more than that. And that's where this, this visual comes in. So what I just talked about was here in tier one. All kids get really great core instruction to standards. And then we know that we also have kids, maybe this 10% and this 5%, that need additional supports. And it, in terms of building a system to allocate those supports, is something that we could have done early on, but we'd be building the plane while we're flying it. We needed to make sure that our core instruction was solid first before adding this in. Because once we start putting kids at interventions, we have to answer the question of whether or not they're getting solid core instruction to start with. Does that make sense? And so that's where we are here. And we have universal screening for all of our kids. We're starting with literacy in all K-5 classroom, every single child in grades K-5 now is being assessed in oral reading fluency as soon as the year starts. Then we take that data, organize kids into appropriate groupings, then we start matching what those kids need. Now we have every single one of our kindergarten, first and second graders in phonics instruction, that's explicit reading instruction, every single classroom, K-1 and 2. And teachers have really bought into that program, and we will start seeing an incredible amount of benefit from kids learning in that structured phonics whole group. Also, all of our schools implement what's called PBIS. PBIS is just a way of saying how we teach behavior. It's really setting adult expectations, if you will. It's a common language that we have. So even if kids change schools, go to another school, they still understand safe, respectful, responsible, what that looks like. And teachers have an idea about how to treat behavior in their own classroom and all of Any questions? And this, this multi-tiered system of support is not just for reading, math, and other academics, but it's also for behavior interventions as well.
Can you talk about the inclusive school scan?
That's something different. When I, I'm right here.
Oh, you're, you're, I got it.
Yeah, with care teams. So the first order of business this year is to make sure that we have teams that can come together to talk about student needs, then a schedule of when those teams actually meet, and now layering in assessment data on top of that, and a place to store it here. Teams can come together and talk about individual kids, and have one-stop shopping for all their data, office referrals, other things that, notes that go along with that for each child to make.
And those are both academic and behavior?
Yes. And if you see here, there's some data for behavior and some for attendance here on this page. This is, is this the, still the layout of Synergy, or are they still upgrading this?
This is the behind-the-scenes of Synergy for how the system will work. If you select a plan for a student, and you can document what you're doing specifically. And so we had to sit around a table all together and say, okay, for attendance, that's the problem. Here's a possible intervention. Like, we had to list everything out and fill this spreadsheet. So it was pretty intense, because you, we needed our reading specialist at the table. If, if letter reversals is a problem, what's the intervention that we're going to try? And how long do we need to try it for? So really detailed.
So it's a scientific approach to really dialing into what a child needs. Instead of coming to the table and saying, well, he's just not completing his work. Well, this takes it to a whole new level of why. Is it a can't or a won't? What skill deficits does a kid have that, where we may need to support? And then we document it over time in a central database.
And that's the thing, too, about, well, is the problem academic, or is it behavior? And in that case, a kid's just not completing their work, you don't, you don't know if it's, and so I like it that it's a, an approach that can consider all of those options.
Absolutely. And again, you can't have instruction without talking about behavior. The higher level of instruction, generally the higher level of engagement, I mean, the quality. Higher quality of instruction generally means a higher degree of engagement. And all of it goes together. Any questions on that? Nope? So, getting into the final goal of our strategic plan, which is facilities, the strategy that the Board has adopted is, or was a general obligation bond, to get us to a point where our facilities do reflect the love and respect we have for our students. And as you see here, there's really a, you know, it's either a yes or a no. And our bond did not pass, and we're going to go over that and get into a little bit of learning together. But really, on the adult action side, that was, that was an incredible amount of work that just went into the left-hand side of all the planning meetings, the going through the ballot, and all the filings with the Office of Elections, to setting up an oversight committee, to all the ad campaigns and everything. That really dominated 99% of our time for, for a long time. And the bond did not pass. So right now, at least where I am as a superintendent, is thinking here. So we know the result of the bond, now what? So we need to engage in, you know, analyzing as a group, the election analysis, and it's really important for us to have your input as a team, all of us working together, because at the end of the day, it's the Board's call. What, what would you like to do? And so it's really important for me, as your superintendent, to know where you are emotionally on this. What other questions do you have? How are you feeling after we get through some of this data? And I'll have other questions to answer after we get into that as well. Fair enough? Okay. So, on the last slide, you'll see bond election analysis. If you could go ahead and click on that. I want everybody to have this in front of them. And it'll take you to a spreadsheet. And I'm going to start, I'm going to work off of my laptop here. And I'll know if you're logged in.
There we go. Last slide. Got it. Got me. Thanks to Steve and Leslie looking over my shoulder, saying he doesn't know what he's doing.
Daniel, could you, could you help us with getting this up on the screen? There we go. There we go.
Yeah. Try this again. Right click there.
And Daniel, if you could, if you could shrink it just a little bit, that would be, we don't need to see it very clearly, because we have it right in front of us as well, but it'd be good to, there we go. That's perfect. And then scroll up a little bit, so we can see the titles. Okay. So, the election happened on the 7th. The following week, we met to debrief and do what you call in business, a post-mortem. What worked well? What didn't? What do we do differently? Generally, what happened? And so we've taken all of that data, and we've basically broken this down into a four-part protocol. This is the protocol that I'm used to, whether we're talking about reading achievement data or a bond election, this protocol is generally the same. And we start out with, what are the facts? And then we'll get into, what are the adult actions that resulted with, in those facts? And maybe even the most important part is the third section, which is what inferences can be made? What inferences can we make, given the facts and the actions? That's really key, and that's where I need the Board's critical thinking on that as well. And then at the end, really, it's what are the actionable factors going forward in terms, okay, what's the plan now? What are next steps? And we're going to go through the first three together, and then the fourth one, we'll save as sort of a whole group discussion, because that's really where I need some of your thoughts going forward. This doesn't have to be the last time we talk about this, by the way. And again, this is 100% the Board's call on, on what you'd like to do going forward. And so if we go back to the first section, and what are the facts? I'm going to go over these with you, and then if you scroll down, you see your partner assignments. So you're going to have to get up and move a little bit. You see your partner assignments down there for the first section. And humor me real quick, and click on the title at the top, what are the facts? Click on that. And my team, if you could help, our Board members, if they need it. It'll take you to a jam board. Did you get there?
I think I did.
Yes. And you'll see your grouping there. All you need to do is click on that, where you see your name. Double-click that, where you see your name, and it'll take you to a sticky note that you can type into. So after I'm done going through what our team's analysis has been, then you'll have a chance to work with your partner to, to make any additions you feel need to be there. And so if we go back to the first section, back to the tab of bond election analysis, we'll go ahead and start. So the facts are pretty straightforward, and I, I'm not, this isn't any big revelation when we're talking about what happened. When we look at precinct data, if you look down at the bottom, where it says on the tab, precinct data, Marion, you can click on that, and that'll take you to, to the precinct data. But I'm going to give you the analysis right now. That's just for, you're going to take this with you, and you'll have that for, as your own, moving forward. So we only won one precinct total, which was one of the two precincts in the south. So this was in the south. Lost the north precinct in town. We lost all rural precincts by a ratio of 2 to 2.5 to 1. There was no formal opposition filed with the ballot. And this is a fact we think is relevant, and that is, SFSD has lost five out of six bond elections post-consolidation, and it took three tries to pass the SHS Phase 2. So we have that there as well. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that there were 12 bonds and levies, only one passed on November 7th. That was St. Paul. And it was a very small bond with an awesome grant matching it. So it was a tough, tough election all the way around for, for every school district. So if you look at those facts there, and you, you take a look at the precinct data there, take a minute to look at that. And then what I'd like you to do is go down to your partner assignments, and I'd like you to move to an area where you can talk to your partner real quick about what the facts are, and, and make sure to write in on the jam board, things we might have missed, or things you'd like to see there. And we can, we can start now.
Tom, I'll come to you.
Okay. So, some things you'd like to share, share with the group before we move on, move on on what were the facts? Something that wasn't, go ahead.
We just noticed one thing that, that it's a one-issue ballot, right? But we had a solid turnout, it was like 52% at the end of the day, which for a one-issue ballot in May, is, or sorry, November, in an off-cycle election year, is, is pretty darn solid. So, you know, the word got out.
That's an inference.
Oh, sorry.
That you get an inference.
Sorry, I'll, I'll.
We're good.
Our fact, our fact was, it was a one-issue, it was a one-issue ballot.
One-issue ballot, solid turnout, 52%.
Yes.
52, I didn't realize that. I hadn't checked on it, because it's depressing to go back and look at it, so I'm glad that you brought that up. 52%, wow.
Someone else?
No, the, right afterwards, you sent us an OSBA article, and all the bonds that failed, failed by about the same amount, about 10%. So.
And how, how many bonds and levies were there?
Like nine or something.
There were 12.
Well, there was levies and bonds, but all the bonds failed except for that little one at St. Paul.
Yep.
They all failed by about the same percentage rate.
It's a tough, tough election. Others? Derek?
Yeah, Owen and I were discussing, pointed out, kind of looking at the, the previous bonds that did pass were by a fairly small margin. You know, you look at the 69, it was 51.7, then 52 and 52. So even the ones that were successful were by very, very small margins.
Anything else before moving? Anything else before moving on? No? Okay. Well, terrific. And you've all recorded those, which is great. So, we'll have that, and we can move on to the actions taken that resulted in the facts. And so, I'll read, I'll read for you what we have here. So, we counted fifty-eight separate public engagement opportunities. Fifteen three-to-four-hour long-range facilities planning committee meetings. Seven separate K-8 community listening sessions. Three separate rounds, and in the K-8 listening sessions, in a lot of those listening sessions, there were more adults in those meetings than the school serves kids. Three separate rounds of professional scientific phone survey, polling, I should say polling, not surveys, with enormous sample sizes of four-hundred each. One community superintendent forum on the board-approved general obligation proposal, as advertised in our town. Countless principal communications by email, parent square, both electronic and voice messages to their respective school communities, reader boards, websites. Nine school-specific PTT, PTC, or booster meetings with one to two board members accompanying superintendent. One open house of Silverton Middle School, and that was done on homecoming. We also had a, a district-wide election information campaign. YouTube ad campaign, Facebook and Instagram ad campaigns. Facebook and Instagram information sharing campaign. Best practice-based bond website dedicated just to the bond. And then signs at every single SFSD facility, most of them in English and in Spanish, both internal and external. So, take a look at your partner assignments. And again, we just finished facts. We're going in, we're just talking about actions. What did we actually do? That resulted in the outcome we got. And just, just a word of caution, it's going to be so easy for you to jump to inferences. But, but try to really just focus on what exactly did we do in terms of actions? And so, find your partner down there, and we'll give you ten minutes. So, talking about adult actions, those actions which resulted in those facts. Who'd like to start?
Well, I'll start. We, I see some others did too. We had board meetings to the list. There were endorsements from SFBA, a firework, individual endorsements. We had some of those PAC campaign activities, but there's door knocking, yard signs. PAC contributions, financial contributions were made. Social media posts were made, et cetera.
Excellent, excellent.
Conversations with personal contacts that we were talking about, that from the board level. I know that those conversations took place, and people were diligent about setting goals, about calling people or seeing them face-to-face.
One thing I think we may have forgotten is the first Friday that you spent... We should probably make sure that's on there too. Yes. Josh?
Sorry, my screen's doing weird things. There's Jennifer drawing.
I'm, yeah, sorry.
What was your question? Sorry, Scott?
You want to share some of the actions?
It was just the numerous, you know, I, I remember being at the office and seeing you gear up numerous times, meeting with individuals, just talking, you know, taking the time. So, that's a fact. And then, God knows how many conversations that I had at the office, so...
What about interviews with our town in the Statesman Journal?
Excellent. Let's make sure that's in there.
The voters pamphlet endorsement. Endorsements in the PAC accomplished those things.
Can someone make sure that's in there also? Just make a note of that real quick on one of the post-its. Just so we have that.
It's there.
It's there, okay. Any others?
Mailers?
Mailers.
Is that, was that on?
Anything else? Some we didn't think of? All right. So, this, now we get into the, the fun stuff, which is why? What inferences can be made between those two, facts and actions? This is where your critical thinking is needed, and I'll just read you what we have. First one is fourteen K-8 community listening sessions and a focus on trust-building with each K-8 community did not meaningfully impact election results in those precincts. K-8 communities were not meaningfully engaged with the improvements and repairs in their buildings, and/or did not believe those improvements and repairs justified the costs. It took ten years for district to build Phase Two of SHS. During that time, students and staff were split between two campuses, causing an extraordinary loss of instructional time and inefficiency. In other words, it took ten years for the SFSD community to reach its threshold of tolerance. The PAC started too late and was under support. Social media played a major factor in spreading misinformation. Overestimated ability to convince community that this is what is best for student learning environments and staff working conditions. Maintenance discussion was not a focus of the campaign. This topic came up a lot. And some other pieces here, just additional pieces of feedback that we received that were throughout the campaign. Some feedback from voters that the bond package was not transparent. Some feedback from voters that the bond represented wants rather than needs. Some feedback from voters that the cost was too high. Some feedback that not enough communication. Some feedback was around the maintenance plan. Where was the maintenance plan? Some feedback that we bombarded, insinuating we overspent on communications and information campaign. Okay, so that's, those are the inferences that we drew as a team. Now, I'm really interested to know what you think in your partner groups, if you take a look at your partner assignments. We're going to give fifteen minutes for this one. All right, everyone. I've heard some really great thoughts being tossed back and forth. I'm really interested to know what, what you came up with, and who'd like to share? Who'd like to start out? What inferences can we make between the facts and the actions?
Well, I'll throw one out that Derek brought up, and that's that people, we can infer that our, our investors, our community, didn't feel like the investment was worth the cost.
Jennifer and I, you know, the actions resulted in high voter turnout. But it failed to convince the voters to vote yes, you know. We, we also were just talking about... It seemed like the, you know, had the high voter turnout was supposed to help us. Didn't work against us, just an interesting thing. Thought maybe the rural, some people, mostly rural areas, kind of resent the, the pushy salesman type. Some other I can't find where it put, but it was on... What works for... Methods that motivate one group of people offend the other group of people, and vice versa.
That's huge.
You know, and so, if, you know, if you have a campaign that has too much concern, but the other side says, you're trying to scare me. And then the other side, you know, it's just...
Adding in one place subtracts from another.
Yeah.
Zero-summing.
Yeah.
Others? I know you guys had more inferences. Aaron?
I mean, you know, distrust in public education and how public education is funded.
Yes.
I think, I think that was one that we heard quite a bit. They're not going to spend a dollar because they just, they, they don't want us to put it into the broken system.
Steve and I have talked at length about, you know, this idea of, if you take the major issues of the day in Oregon related to public education, and you assign one percentage point for each, you know, I mean, you'd end up having a significant impact, and it's something we can't control.
One thing that I think Tom brought up last time that kind of resonated in, in conversations, but just the timing. So, overall, inflation, food, gas, and that potentially for some folks being at the top end of their budget. And here, here's one more thing that I either can't control. You know, we talked earlier about seventeen percent increase from PGE. So, I think, I think people were factoring that in, whether or not they could absorb the additional cost.
We, we talked about that too, but, but in a way that people are looking for an excuse not to spend money, especially right now. And I saw people latch on to any bit of information, whether they knew it was truthful or not. Right? You know, somebody would be on social media, and my tax bill is going to go up four thousand dollars. And we're like, and I'm going, and I'm going, man, you live in a mansion. Like, I, I don't know how much you're, because these people aren't understanding its assessed value. And how many times we had to say assessed value versus real value, right? But they're looking for the excuse, to your point, to not spend money, given the current economic climate. And I can respect that. I understand it, but, yeah, it should be based on fact, not on action.
We thought a reasonable inference was that some people believe that a no vote means an indefinite continuance of the status quo.
Could you expand on that?
That if, if we vote no, that nothing really is going to happen immediately, or even in our foreseeable future. Nothing negative as far as to the district, whether it be closing a school or...
So, there's no urgency?
No urgency, exactly. Yeah, that was sense. I think that relates to what Scott's team said there about, you know, it took ten years of tolerating a really bad situation with two high schools before the community came up and supported.
Yeah, a situation where kids literally lost years, if you totaled it up, on the inefficiencies of going between two buildings. Any others?
This one statement disconnect between how we assumed it would be closed versus failing by ten percent, some, what was, some...
Yeah.
So, I ju, I can't get over this in my head. Like, this is the one thing that keeps hanging me up, is how much time? The, so, all right, soapbox. People who said, we didn't know this bond was happening, or we didn't have enough information. I mean, maybe we could have packaged the information differently, but man, there were so many listening sessions. We gave people opportunities to speak to the board members, to the superintendent, to ask their questions, like face-to-face. Again, how much time, Scott, you took out of your time to meet the peoples individually? So, this, I think I made this comment in last board meeting, it was like these echo chambers. Like, where were all the no votes? Like, they were out there, and we're, but how do we not hear it? Either we weren't willing to hear it, they were afraid to say it for retribution, or for being thought negatively towards. That gap between that one or two percent between the phone polling, plus our own emotions? I don't, did my emotions of positivity cloud the reality of the situation? You know, like Aaron said, it, some people said that wasn't enough money. Or BAC was kind of caught in the middle at times. Do we go, it's really small? Do we go big? That ten percent, nine percent gap, I'm like, man, how do we...
But that was in the polling, I mean, if you go back and look at the polling data, it was eleven percent undecideds, right? And we needed to turn...
That's what, yeah.
We needed to turn six, turn six percent of those into yes votes. So, if those undecideds all, all sit, you know, were nos, then that makes the difference, right?
Great point. So, then how did we miss on those undecideds?
And that could just come down to the, it's too much money for our budget. I mean, that, that, I heard that a lot. I'm sure everybody, you know, just coming up with that.
Although, that, that, when the poll was done, it was for a hundred and thirty-eight million. So...
The other one, the, to kind of going to the financial piece that we put on that sticky note was, you know, concerned this wouldn't be the last time, you know, we'd be asking for money. That, you know, in, in people, I had a conversation with someone, well, how do you say, you know, that you're not going to come back to me in ten years and ask for money? I'm like, I can't guarantee that, being full transparency. I mean, a lot of communities have ten, fifteen, twenty-year cycles of bonds, or even, you know, even shorter than twenty, twenty-five years, ten, fifteen years. But they know that they're going to have to just do bonds every ten years in order to finance the capital improvements. So, you know, that was a general concern, you know, that we had heard from some of this, that, that, you know, wouldn't be the last time.
Couple more. Well, two things, I don't know if they ended up on our sticky note or not, but a couple of things that... I think sometimes we get too close to the issue. We make assumptions that everybody around us should know as much as we know. And we don't. And a good chunk of our voters are not going to be getting, you know, a lot of the stuff they're hit with. And then when they do, you know, I, it, I think sometimes we get in a trap where we sit there and we think, well, we told them what the money was going to be spent for. Well, granted, we all know we can't, we can't do the bid process. We can't, we can't go out and do that. But is there some way, and I don't, I have more questions than answer here. But is there some way that we can make those numbers come to life a little bit better? As far as a given building, this much, and when, when we make the generalization, we say HVAC, heating and cooling. Could we have a number out there, you know, the numbers need to be real. But, you know, five hundred thousand for ducking, or, you know, what, whatever, electrical, this and that. Broke down a little more so people can get a, a picture. I think, I think they need pictures.
And that came up a lot, Jennifer.
And, and, and so, it gets real easy for us to see because, you know, well, we put HVAC. But it began to look, I mentioned cookie cutter, you know, to each school and, and down the line. And on a building, if, if it was a roof, well, was it the whole building's roof? Was it this wing's roof? Was it, you know, instead of just roofs going on there? That, that gives, because that can take away then the, the people that maybe know their building and saw people up there and know that a roof was put on it eight years ago, why is that on there now? You know, and find out that there's a wing, or a room, or whatever, that needs some definite attention. And so, I think, I, I think getting out of our own way, I don't know how else to say it. But, and, and seeing, and that's where incorporating, getting some honest feedback. And I think there's people willing to give it to us. We've indications, what we've seen, and getting some emails and stuff like, willing to give it to us. And listen, and, and address some of those, and not that anyone, use Owen's language here, not everyone, you know, no one has the silver bullet. But maybe we'll get to a silver bullet if we take something from here and something from there, you know, put it together. As, as for what we can do to make the next go-around successful. And, and it can be little things. I also threw out the idea of, and I know in my political science studies, it makes a heck of a lot of difference what percentage you have. And we had a berry for one-issue vote. We had extremely high turnout. In fact, I'm going to guess there hasn't been many that high, so we've had it hot. But you hit presidential elections, or governor's elections, things like that, you get higher turnouts. And unless all my professors didn't know what they're talking about, which sometimes I didn't think they do. But in poly sci, you get a certain level of voters coming out at different percentages. And your first line out... And your first line out is pretty much where a lot of your nos come from, because there are going to be the entrenched, and then you're going to get younger and stuff like that coming out in the voting, the higher percentage you get. More of those independent voters, that sort of thing.
And that's an assumption we made, that, you know, if we, if the more, the higher the turnout is, that, that, that should work in our favor. But that wasn't the case.
Did, did Jeremy give you demographic breakdowns for like the voter turnout? I've got the precincts, but I'm just curious like.
I don't think he could. For some reason, there's a reason.
The data may not be there.
Yeah, he's not able to get that type of information.
I just would like to just know where the nos are, but they're probably just spread out.
But what we don't know is if it had been a thirty percent vote, it might have been a twenty percent loss.
It's a really interesting thing also, you know, Brett Davidson and I were talking in two thousand, between two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen elections, two thousand fourteen had thousands more voters, identical result. So even having thousands more voters, it was the same result, almost to the number. So I think that's worth, you know, considering also.
I just wanted to say that what Phil's, Phil's idea about making things a little more concrete, I think would, could be then. I, I don't know if it would be.
Yeah.
It is a, it's a potential to consider, because it, it, and people, and this was me too. Until I knew that you can't go out and do the bidding process before the bond passes. I mean, and a lot of people are put out by that. They're like, why would we say yes to something when there's not a, you know, more solid information? Well, that's just the way it works, you know, but that doesn't, that doesn't work for a lot of people. But if we could make a happy medium there, where we're a little more descriptive, yeah, that might make a difference.
I, I told Aaron and Josh, I just, I hadn't looked at it until now, and I kind of surprised myself that I hadn't. But just a day ago, day or two ago, I went and looked, you know, Mount Angel passed a bond last May. And I went and looked at, they still got their bond page stuff, you can still find it. And I went and looked at that. It's a lot different setup than anything I've seen as far as districts having on their bond page and what it looks like. And quite honestly, a lot of them look like stuff we had that you see. And this one had different structure as far as the amounts. They were, they still make you go, gas, that costs that much, you know, divided out. But it was, the way it was divided up and pinpointed, the amounts they had assessed there and everything. It was on these little spreadsheets that you could just click on, going across the screen. Anyway, some might want to take a look. I don't know, Scott, you may even want to talk administrators over there and see their thoughts as far as what they think, you know. Unfortunately, there weren't many bonds around that did pass, but maybe contact the ones that did and get a feel for what.
Well, Mount Angels was a much lower number.
It is, but their per thousand wasn't that much different numbers than us.
They also had a forty percent kicker, the ten million dollar bond with a four million kicker.
Yeah.
And that's just like, that's a bargain.
No, that, that's, but their, their per thousand, their voters were, their voter, their, their five hundred thousand dollar house was going to be taxed just like ours was.
They're high, yes.
Yeah, it's, they're, they're high. They're high per thousand. They're higher than us. And so, and they were willing to vote for it.
But, but yeah, to your point, I mean, I think, you know, our in-house staff could probably get a little more granular description of what.
Right.
Each building needs, you know, just say, you know, that roof is ten years old, twenty-five years old.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm curious, like, from the other ones repackaged. I'm just wondering. Well, now I'll just keep it to myself for now.
And maybe I'll think about when we move into the last section.
Yeah.
Before we move into, you know, the action, what, what actions should we, should we be thinking about coming out of this analysis? Steve, do you want to run people through the tab we have for pricing before we do that or after or?
I'd say go ahead and start the exercise because I.
Great. We did some research on the side, some questions Tom asked, and we got a report back a couple of days ago. So going to the fourth category, actionable factors going forward. So this is one where, you know, we have a little bit of thinking, but really this is where the board comes in because it's really about what the board wants to do moving forward. So I'll put, you know, an example of, of what we had and then we can do this together. So if a rural vote stayed the same, the town yes vote would have to increase by four hundred thirty-nine votes. If my, this was Brett, I believe, put this in. If my numbers are correct, that would mean the in-town vote would have to have been sixty-four percent yes to overcome the sixty-five percent no out-of-town vote. And that is only winning by one vote margin. So that's, that's an example that we have in there. I don't know if it really gets at actionable factors going forward or if that should be more of an inference, but coming out of this, two things. One is we do have, the next election is May, so that's a fact. We know that that's coming up. We found out about a week ago that our facilities assessments will be good for one more election. We didn't think they would be, but in checking with the state, they are.
So that means, Scott, just to clarify, that means they would be good even for a November election, correct?
Is it?
No, just May.
One more, so it would be May.
We thought that this was the last one that it would be good for since it was done in two thousand nineteen. But the Anna at the state said that, that both our long-range facility plan, which would still be good for a while, and the facilities assessment would be accepted for the May twenty twenty-four election because the applications for awesome grants are due on December fifteenth.
So that gives you the second piece.
But also the amount goes from four to six million.
So you're saying.
We didn't think that would be possible for, for May at all.
So we qualify for to go for the awesome again with?
In May with our current plans, but yes, our.
That's awesome.
After the May election, that we, we need a newest assessment for any election after that. But of course, that, that's the, that's the easier plan, you know, that's the easier part of the, of the, of the deal to get compared to the long range.
Facilities plan isn't, isn't too.
That was done.
It's, it's a decent undertaking, but it's not.
Another couple of years.
Since I wasn't on here through that, what's involved with the assessment?
Well, it's going to every school. It's, it's sitting down with the staff of every school, the principals.
Well, it's just, it's, it's getting affirmed to, to update the, the needs, you know, at every building. That was done back in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, originally by, it wasn't BLRB, it was BLB, I believe. There's approved vendors by the state because they do offer a, it's either a twenty or twenty-five thousand dollar grant to help with that cost. But it's, it's, it's a, it's a required element by, by the state. And you have to have that as well as a long-range facility master plan to, to, to even be able to qualify for an awesome grant.
Ballpark, what costs is involved in that?
More than the grant that goes.
But.
Sixty to eighty thousand dollars, it's just a guess.
So initially, post-election, we didn't think that that May ballot would even be possible. But we always reserve the right to get new information and to double check our sources. And, and going through a facilities assessment is a big deal and takes a lot of time. And that time is something we just don't have. The filing deadline for May election would be March first.
So what you're saying is that we, if we had to do a facilities assessment again, then it wouldn't, we wouldn't qualify for the awesome.
We wouldn't have enough time.
Well, we'd have to wait till the November election.
Yes.
There'd be time to do that for a November election. But we did realize that the, the current one we have on file would, would be good for one more election, the May election in this case. Because there wouldn't have been time, you know, for that. But that's great news, but it still also means that if there was an appetite to go out in May, and I'm not offering an opinion either way, a decision would have to be made about the, the exact program, the amount and what it is we're doing essentially by the February board meeting is what that is.
So we get, if, if we go for May, if the board chooses to do so, we already have the assessment taken care of. Which qualifies us for awesome. Not for, but an additional two million dollars that the state.
Compared to what we just had there.
That's very positive news.
Steve, on the awesome grant, do, excuse me, that we are reapplying for, I guess it is, is the way, am I using the right wording?
It's just a one-page application due on, not, not, can't even be submitted before, on December fifteenth in the afternoon hour specifically.
Oh, my gosh.
Soft, a little wifi symbol disappears, you're in trouble.
So does the school board then need to make a decision by that time to, to? Because if the timeline for the awesome grant is that time, we can't apply for it if we're not going to.
Well, so the application says anticipated bond amount, and then like how many buildings are getting certain amounts of projects? So I sent her an email today asking if we don't know exactly the amount that we're going for when we submit the application. Is that okay to change after? I did not receive a response. So I'm hoping to get something from them by tomorrow so I could let you all know.
Okay, so we don't know.
But essentially, a, a decision would have to be made by the December board meeting to say, you know, even though we may not know the exact amount or program as to whether we're going to go out and we'd have to submit the application on, on the fifteenth. Now I suppose that the intent could, would be, you say, we intend to go out, but I suppose we, you know, even after submitting the application, and I could clarify this with her as well, that while we're sure we're going out at this date, if a decision was made to not go out, I'm sure we could just, you know, pull that. Just say, well, we're not going out.
That, that, but what I'm, but what I'm hearing is we're at this time uncertain to hear back from them as far as, I'm just going to make, make a number, that we'd have to have the number on there that we anticipated to go for. And then if after the fifteenth, we decided to go for ten million less, that wouldn't be an option or would be?
The, the cell on the application says anticipated bond amount. So that's why, you know, I sent the, the clarifying question today. I didn't, didn't even think about that until today. You know, if we were to change that, that number after we were initially approved, would that, would that matter?
Because that could be a heavy lift to have decided by then as far as amount and scope.
Yes.
So again, we're not giving you an opinion or recommendation either way. What we want to know is where's the board on this, you know, emotionally, meaning, you know, what's your gut feeling? Because, you know, we have a lot of time and resources that we need to go into this. And as a superintendent, I don't want to prioritize that if this is something that you're not interested in. So it's important for me to know, you know, how you're feeling, because we don't want to get totally involved in this at the expense of other things we're working on, if this is something you don't want to be.
Do you want to know that right now or after we talk about the pricing?
After, after, today. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, we can, we can talk, we can talk about that tonight.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I, I'm ready to respond, but except for, but he has the pricing. We, we, we're going to talk about that and that might change.
So why don't we, why don't we segue into that?
Sure. So I did include a tab on this Google sheet, and I can send you Lauren's complete PowerPoint or PDF. I asked her, Tom, I was thinking the same thing you mentioned two weeks ago. You know, just about if we were to go out and try to keep it at the same, you know, same amount, which now it's down based on this year's property tax statements, it's now one ninety-six per, per thousand assessed value. So this is just, the slide that's on here is just a, a screen snip of one of the slides, and I'll send you the others because there's some graphs that are easy to look at, but, but I would have had to include about five screenshots. So this one basically shows how much, based on today's interest rates, and they always build in a one point five percent cushion. So they have a true interest cost now of, well, each scenario is six percent plus. But that first, the first three columns under the yellow bar for twenty-five years, and then there's some scenarios for thirty years. But at twenty-five years at the current interest rates with the cushion, to maintain a dollar ninety-six to expire the current bond and then just carry it out for, you know, for twenty-five years through, what, two thousand fifty, is, it gets us sixty-seven, sixty-seven million dollars to maintain that dollar ninety-six. Now, we would also be eligible for the six million dollar awesome grant. So that's seventy-three million plus dollars, which, you know, it was seventy-five to build the middle school. But, you know, maybe by the time we, you know, maybe by May, it's eighty. I, I don't know. We have to get that updated. So then there's what's called the combined level levy, which is basically what we did in the case of Silverton High School Phase Two, which really it, it bumps it up basically right away by seventy-five cents per thousand. Well, so I, what I asked her was, I said, how much, how much would it get us if we kept it at one ninety-six just period? And all the, all the way out for twenty-five years or thirty years? So for twenty-five years, it gets a sixty-seven. For thirty years, it gets a seventy-five. Combined level levy, what that is, is it's, if you were to, you know, to, to bump it up, I asked how much, how much would it take to get, I threw out a ninety-five million dollar number because I figured the middle school plus the high school, that, that's what, that, that was, plus, plus an awesome grant. So that would be, you know, roughly a hundred million dollars. So to get ninety-five million at the, at the current interest rates plus cushion, you could see it would bump it up to, by seventy-five cents to two sixty-five, and then just maintain that for, for, for twenty-five years at the two sixty-five. So that, that, so that's kind of the same kind of pricing structure actually that was chosen for, for the bond we, we just did. It would bump, it was going to bump up a dollar sixty-ish to the three sixty. So that's the same kind of financing there. The level levy is actually this, the type of financing that was chosen in SHS Phase Two, where it bumped up from the, was it around a dollar, I don't have the graph in front of me, about a dollar fifty to three fifty or so when that bond was passed until Phase One was expired, and then it came down into the twos. And it's been shrinking ever since just due to the, the higher than forecasted assessed value growth in the area and the two refinancing that we did. So, so for, for that scenario, again, it's ninety-five million, but it immediately bumps up two dollars and forty-one cents to four dollars and thirty-one cents. And then when high school Phase Two expires in twenty twenty-seven, it comes down to two forty-one. So again, that's what happened with high school Phase Two in nineteen, or in two thousand six, two thousand seven. It bumped up for a few years and it came back down to a certain level. So those are, those are different financing structures, but basically the premise was that first column in the twenty-five year and the first column in the thirty year was how much just to stay at a dollar ninety-six all the way out. And that got us the sixty-seven million or the seventy-five million for thirty years. And then the other two were two different ways to, to do financing at a ninety-five million dollar number. So those were just, just to kind of, to get some updated numbers based on the current interest rates and with lesser numbers than we just went out for.
So the maintain, the, the maintain the dollar ninety-six for thirty years gets us to seventy-five, which was the cost.
Of the middle school.
But it will invariably be more.
Yeah, we'd have to assume that it's probably going to be a little more, but we'll also have the awesome grant.
Oh, yeah.
Just so I'm understanding, the, the interest portion on the bottom, is that additive to the principal? Or is that, is that the total cost of the, what the levy would be? So like. So like, you'd like in the first situation, it's a hundred and nine, or it's ninety-two million?
Mm-hmm. That's just the interest.
That's interest on top of the sixty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
That's built into this modeling?
Yeah.
So it's ninety-two million on top of the sixty-seven million dollars?
Total interest as a percent of par, one hundred and thirty-seven percent.
Wow. So it's really a hu- a hundred and fifty some odd million dollar total?
Well, and that's one of the reasons why the B A C went for the twenty-six year term.
Say fifty million dollars in interest.
Yeah, but at this point, we don't even have that choice if we wanna build a middle school. We don't have a choice. It's gotta be the thirty.
It is.
Why do you say that, Jennifer?
Because sixty-seven million is not gonna give us a new middle school based on the, uh, data that has been generated from all of the groups.
But if we get the awesome? Covers it.
I also had to run these numbers, uh, sorry, I forgot, um, based on November twenty twenty-four because this is, I asked her this question before we got that information from O D E that we would still be eligible in May for the awesome based on our current assessment. So I just said, if we were to go out in November, so May would, would look pretty similar. It's just, it would be maybe one less debt service payment on our current debt. I don't know how much it would be impacting this, probably not, not much.
I have a question. So say we, as a board, this is just different from how previous couple of years ago. We had committees that brought this to the board, right? And then we voted on the plan they gave us. Are we out on our own on this essentially if we need to make it?
Are you ready for, okay, so, um, I have a prepared statement.
Okay.
And I'm just gonna read it because this, and, and I, I ran it by Scott earlier just to make sure that my thinking was correct. So, um, I'm just gonna say it because it addresses, it addresses that. So, um, my sense of responsibility generally favors preparing a plan to discontinue the use of Silverton Middle School over preparation of a new bond plan. Um, it's my view that we need a plan for how to house the sixth through eighth grade students who reside in what is now the S M S boundary in case we have to discontinue its use before we have a replacement. So to me, that's the number one thing. Um, still, I see the value in a May bond plan that is responsive to the general feedback we've gleaned from the November bond amount, uh, or that the November bond amount was too high and acknowledges that the replacement of Silverton Middle School is the district's most pressing need. So I'm open to May. Um, I'm comfortable with simply paring down the November bond plan because we already conducted extensive community engagement to develop it. Paring it down honors the work already done while considering the general feedback we've gleaned that the total amount was too high. Paring down the bond plan to fund the replacement of the middle school would likely take minimal resources, potentially leaving some time for staff to start putting together options for the board to consider regarding the discontinuation of Silverton Middle School. Uh, unless a compelling argument arises, I have no desire to start a bond plan that is significantly different than what was proposed for Silverton Middle School in, in the November bond plan. In my mind, this would take significant community engagement and I don't see that our staff have the time to both engage the community and reformulate a different bond while starting to develop options for discontinuing S M S. So I, it's for me, if we're doing, talking about May, I think we take what we've got and edit it. And that's the, really the only option, um, in my, my, in my personal opinion.
I'm, I'm, I lean towards where your head is at as well. I, I, I'm still kind of torn at being completely transparent, but I, I would like to, in my mind, use the resources and what we've already done to also strike while there's an awareness about this issue. Everybody knows that the issues that we have at hand and I would like to get this while it's on top of mind for everybody. Some of these numbers, Steve, thank you for putting this, these dollars because this kind of helps me. If we take kind of what you said, Jennifer, go with the figures we had of seventy-five million-ish for the, for the middle school and maybe we do target some little extra that, that I think you look at the financials here and I'm just pulling like on the twenty-five year combined level levy, kind of, if you're in that ninety-four-ish, ninety-five million dollar range plus the six million awesome, we're looking at a hundred, a hundred and one million. That does give us a little bit of extra dollars for some real critical need, uh, projects within, uh, you, within Mark Twain, within Robert Frost and the other K eight communities. Uh, it, it, it just will not get us as much as what our original plan was. I would like to see if financially it made sense, uh, you know, looking at the bond rates, we would have to kind of like put it out there and I don't, again, we don't have a lot of time to do that and acid tests this. But would that be a number that would, would really get us some critical updates? At least in K eight and Mark Twain and Robert Frost that are needed, um, as well as getting us the new middle school? And would that amount, say in one of these scenarios, be tolerable by our whole community? Um, because it seems it's, it's, we're talking now down from, you know, a dollar ninety, or a dollar ninety-six to something in the three something, right, which was the original bond to in the two, two dollars and we're talking sixty, sixty-nine cents extra per thousand? Is it, you know, that sounds a lot more tolerable maybe than what we had heard on the original bond because obviously that was not, that was too high. But I would like to see our, our, our current, you know, uh, uh, plan with just some minor tweakings, but I would like to see if we can put some additional amounts for the other communities as well because I do think we need to have buy-in through our whole community.
Oh, so I'm clarifying, so you're saying you're wanna do a middle school with slight cutouts for a couple high priority projects? Is that correct? Not just middle school only, but a couple others?
If, if that's feasible without killing our staff, right?
Okay.
And, and we have enough due diligence to do that, like that, that's where this ninety-four or almost ninety-five million dollar figure in my mind, uh, looks a lot more appealing. And again, additive this, now with the two million dollar increase on the awesome grant that gets us to a hundred and one million, right?
But my wondering is with the cost escalation that we're gonna have to include, seventy-five million's not gonna be enough now.
But it was earlier this month and now we're only pushing it out a few months.
I don't know.
I mean, I don't know if that makes a difference in my mind. I might be seeing something wrong because if it was good enough, you know, twenty days ago.
Six months?
Yeah. I mean, but what's the difference between November and May? Are we gonna go from a seventy-five million to an eighty-five million dollar middle school?
I, I think the, the risk is not, is starting the project and not being able to finish it with the money that's been allocated. That's the risk, potentially.
Others who haven't weighed in, we'd kind of like to hear.
I kind of like the thinking along what Aaron is saying as far as, uh, that, you know, to me, it seems, you know, hopefully that would be a number that people could get behind and have middle school. And then we definitely need, of the things that we're gonna be done at the other ten schools, there definitely need to be a hierarchy made of just exactly, you know, and go as far down the list as we can go, whatever there is. Uh, and then, uh, which is, puts everything in a better place than we are right now. And we've done, it's out there, it's out there now and so it's in people's minds. Got an extra two million kicker on the awesome, which is great, and some things like that. So I think there's, I think there's more reasons to do it than not do it.
So would that, would that? We're essentially saying we could take our plan that we had and take, take the middle school plans and just do that. But would, and that would be fairly easy. Would it, would, would it take a lot of staff work to just pick the highest priority projects throughout the, the rest of the district?
Well, we could do anything the board wants.
Well, right, I mean, I mean.
But, but I think that the thing, I just put this out there, the concern to me is that we have two months because December's shy with all kinds of other stuff. To engage the community and start making, uh, broad changes to a plan that a committee put together, I think, you know, would be interpreted as, you know, could be as, as not being transparent. So that's just putting that out there. I'm not saying either way. I'm just saying in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, how are we gonna make sure we get the input necessary to make changes for every single one of the schools in addition to a new middle school? Because the middle school has basically been done, right? And we have that. And I think anything on top of that, this is just putting this out there again, uh, would take significant community involvement. Uh, it's one thing that, that our community demands of us is to, to, to get their input. I think that this would be perceived as a board, as board decisions on who gets what.
But is there some credence to waiting till November then? That, I mean, is that, is that an argument? And again, I don't know, I don't, I don't know where my mind is. I see benefit in both. I, I know, I know it costs us extra dollars, but we, it would be in a presidential election, so you would have a higher, even a higher turnout. Um, again, it might not be right. I'm just, I don't, I don't know.
We can, uh, come back to you with thinking around the idea the board is most comfortable with. I don't, I don't wanna try and scare you any way.
I still think that November is way too, if we're gonna really switch things up, it's too soon. I think that, to, to me, that may make sense for editing the current bond. Anything else, I think, would need a much longer timeframe.
To redo a bond would take at minimum eighteen months. And that's eighteen months before the election, before we even file. So we're really talking about two years.
Fair enough.
Um, to do it right from A to Z, uh, making sure that we engage our public the way that they expect to be engaged, uh, is not an easy process.
Would we have to re, also redo the long-range facilities as well?
No.
Just the.
Because that, that, that work is complete.
Okay.
Well, we do need to know when that expires.
That's what I'm asking.
For the awesome grant. And I can get that answer this week as well. But I, I'm just curious, um, Tom and Owen, um, the two thousand thirteen and fourteen bonds happened just before I started. Um, but I noticed, uh, the two thousand thirteen was in May and the two thousand fourteen was in November. Do you recall, um, I, I guess what the, the conversation and the thinking was around that specific gap in terms of when you decided to go the second time?
It was just to get the number down. And, and it failed by a larger margin.
Well, in my recollection was that we got feedback that having, that by mixing, replacing Eugene Field with sprinkling money to the other schools, because that was our original thought. We had a lot of discussion around that, just like we did this time, about what would be the best strategically would get the most support. So we went with that. We got feedback back that it was too confusing, that it wasn't granular enough for folks who was gonna get how, exactly what. Um, and so then we basically said, well, let's try the other option. Let's make it very focused, obviously bring the number down and just focus on Eugene Field, um, which is basically what we did. Uh, and so it was, it was pretty easy to, I guess, take that route and go back to the voters with the other alternative. Those were the two alternatives that, that made it kind of to the final cut, so to speak, and we went one way and got a result.
I s- I started the fall after that all happened. So did you publicize what was gonna happen with Eugene Field before election time? That it was going to close if the bond didn't pass, to Jennifer's point of the exit strategy?
I don't think so.
I don't think that decision was made until after.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that decision was made until after the bond had failed.
In fact, quite honestly, that's where some of our ingrained mistrust comes. I mean, I heard that more than once over the last few months as far as it failed. So it almost felt like, we'll show you. I heard that multiple times.
Yeah, that's that, that's that, different motivational strategies work for different people because if we, if we would've said, we're gonna close it, if the bond doesn't pass, we're gonna have to close it.
Yeah, it could've worked against them too. Yeah, you're right. No, you're right. But I'm just saying that, that's something that was said.
People didn't believe that, that it, I guess the voters didn't believe that the, that the, I won't say threat, but, but really that the danger and the risk that that school posed to the students was significant enough. And the board did appreciate that risk and felt that it was vitally important to move the kids. And so it took pretty extraordinary action to do that.
To your point, Jennifer, with, you know, developing that, you know, plan of Silverton Middle School and how that ties in even if we do go for a May bond. How, how do you not scare people but say, look, if the, if the no, if there's a no vote on this and it's maybe middle school focused or maybe even middle school only? And we had a, we had a person come in, a, a community member come in the last board meeting and say, do we share what the no vote gets you? And that's not scaring, that's not fear mongering, that's just flat-out honesty. If we don't pass this, here's what, here's what is the timeline of what could happen because I think we're getting to the point with Silverton Middle School to Owen, Owen, what you just said about Eugene Field. It's getting to that tipping point where is it really great for our kids to be there? So I think the community has to understand because, again, if we shut down Silverton Middle School, it will inevitably affect every other school community in our district.
That is a fact.
Every family.
That's a fact. And people need to understand that. It's a ripple effect. And it's true. It's not fear mongering. It's not, you know, trying to use emotion. It's darn right fact.
As I've kind of listened to everybody, I definitely agree and we kind of touched on this last meeting about the exit strategy. I think that's critical. We've gotta work on that now. And then as far as whether we go out in May or November, I think we should be looking at like a pro-con analysis. Like if we, what are the benefits of going out in May with limited time for community engagement? Uh, the benefit is that we give them another chance to potentially provide the funds that we need to build a new middle school or some of the projects. If we don't, those funds don't happen. Um, and then understanding there could be some backlash for the, the short turnaround. If we push it back to November, then a lot of our estimates and the time and energy and money we've already invested in getting some of those numbers now, that's all. Not necessarily for not, but we can't u- utilize that. So that kind of leans me towards this, uh, consideration of maybe we do consider May with the understanding of limited, um, time to further engage community before presenting it. But I think we're, we're at that point where time is pretty critical here and, and we don't really have the luxury of waiting. Um, so there are a couple where I'm at right now as, as far as what's gonna be best doing that kind of pro-con analysis piece.
I, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm still kind of stuck on the fact that we can, if we just went for a middle school, we could take the middle school plan and do that without backlash, but we can't add a couple other, pull this out too, add it to and go for the ninety-seven.
I just think you're getting to a slippery slope.
Yes.
That, that's gonna, that's gonna cost you much.
It'll cause too much consternation and upset and then you might, it might cost you the election.
Why that school, not this school? What made you choose?
You'll have to have a green gym issue all over again, but multiplied by every school.
It's gonna be why only that school. It's gonna be why only that school.
It truly needs to be the community's bond.
Right.
It's like, it's the bond the community will support.
Just, just to be clear, the, the reason I, I, I just came up with a ninety-five million dollar number was, honestly, it was the middle school and the things we need to do to the high school.
Like the roof, yeah.
Roof and the controls and the chiller and, I mean, that was, if I recall, ten fifteen million dollars, so.
Then.
Steve, I keep asking the numbers about the bonds and we, you know, we're still, we got, how many more tax cycles do we have to do to pay the high school, to pay that, to finish paying for the high school?
I believe it expires in June twenty twenty-seven.
Does that mean so more and more cycles in?
Tax, tax statements, uh, maybe three, three more, uh, three more tax statements.
I'm just trying to, does, does, what if we waited two or three years? Does it, what, what benefit to how much money we can bond for when we're clear of that thing? Say like two sixty-five or something, you know, is, is, are those numbers in there? I mean, I don't have enough time to really study them and pull them out because it, I feel like we're, like some of these bonds is like, well, we're gonna borrow this much money, but we're still paying for the high school. So I feel like we're like borrowing money, but we're not making a payment on it till three, for three more years. You know, it's like, and, well, the interest is accruing, there's a cost. I mean, they use different terminology. I'm trying, I'm trying to equate it to, you know, buying a farm, buying a house, and just trying to.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, there's, then there's different ways to, to, to structure that, you know, in terms of what it would cost in, in overall interest. And I think the, and I sent the, 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 the complete presentation to you here in the last few minutes. But that scenario is based on a November election and the bonds wouldn't be sold till twenty twenty-five, so you would be looking at some deferred interest. But I guess it would be two years, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and that's, you know, it's, you know.
But that's where that whole, like, what happened with high school phase two, it bumped up right away.
Right.
There was more immediate payment on that, which would've saved interest by doing it that way.
Yeah, and I guess, yeah.
I guess, I guess one question that's definitely worth asking, that maybe we don't have the exact answer, is a hard date or hard set of circumstances, circumstances of the middle school's done. And I think that's the piece that we need to kinda wrap our minds around, get those critical pieces of information, when we're saying, either fiscally it's irresponsible to continue, like, limping along, or it's at the point where it's so dangerous for kids to be in, that as board members and parents and community members, it's unacceptable and not tolerable. And I think that will help us determine, do we have time to wait till that?
Yeah. See, that's, that's kinda my thing, you know, my, 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 this train of thought is me going, wait two or three years, wait till the high school's done. And we're not dealing with deferred interest, none of that stuff, and we can make a really good attempt at it and say, here's the bond. If it doesn't pass, you know, it's, we think we can, if we're gonna pass the bond, hopefully rebuild the school, but, you know, we feel that the school's only gonna last three, four, whatever, at the most, and we'll, we'll close it. It'll have to close in three years if the bond doesn't happen. Something like that.
Another thing that's.
You know, and, and, and it takes years to make that plan, because you gotta, you gotta notify students that the transfers from Salem are, are being revoked. And kids are gonna have to be reshuffled and boundaries rechanged and all that. So it's gonna take years.
It's a really high stakes decision to make, because it's, you know, there, we have to create room for four hundred and fifty kids. On the other hand, we need to, you know, be as respectful as possible with our families who have attended our schools for some time, who don't live within our district boundaries. And they need to be informed years ahead of time. At least a year. So if you're, if, if the board is thinking about, you know, waiting for the bond to be paid off and then going for another bond, which I assume would be a new bond process, you're probably looking at eight years before a new middle school would even be built. And I think we would all agree right now, we will not be in that building in eight years. And then, how does the district recover once four hundred kids leave our district at ten thousand dollars a kid?
Four million bucks.
So you have to let your mind run down that rabbit hole to understand that we would be totally overstuffed at our current level, having four hundred and fifty less kids. So we're talking about people's jobs also, because eighty-five percent of our budget is wrapped up in staffing and benefits. So, so these are, these are really heavy decisions to make. So I just wanna put that out there. It's not as easy as just, well, we'll close, you know, this, that. A ton of thinking needs to go into this. And we certainly don't wanna cause undue stress to our community unless, unless this is something we, we are really serious about. So I'm just putting that out there to say, if you put off the bond until two thousand twenty-seven, you're just looking at, you know, the possibility of when the soonest would be that you could have a middle school completed to move into.
And I think that if we, to me, November is not even, to me, that doesn't make much sense at all, because of having to re-up the facilities assessment and all of that. So to me, it's like, well, why not just try for the May? And it will get us data, no matter what, right? Because we'll know, if, if it's a yes, we'll get a middle school or something else. And if it's a no, it's, it's more data. I don't, I don't see a, a reason why not to do the May, try for May.
Here's my thoughts. Well, it goes right off of you, and then, Owen, I'd like to hear yours, if you'd be kind to share when I'm done. If, one of the issues people have is fiscal responsibility. If we already qualify for the awesome grant, we already have the assessments done, how much do those assessments cost to do? Like, two hundred, eighty thousand, forty? But still money that we'd be saving. I would be very curious to get how much it would cost to reassess the middle school for replacement or remodel, to put that to bed, to get a whole another set of numbers, if possible. But I don't, if it's too expensive, we don't have time, then we don't, but.
Why, why a new set of numbers on that?
Just to show the community that it cannot be done cheaper. That'd just be, I just, I just, that's opinion. It does not have to happen, but I'm getting frustrated with hearing that, adding to social media, adding to the distrust. I'm just frustrated, so I'd like to say, see, I guess. That's my thought on that.
Like a second opinion?
Yes. Cause like, I was, when I was going for the urban renewal grant, or like, if I was going to, you had to get three bids from the city for downtown before they'd average it and say, yeah, here you go. I mean, our city did a great job at doing that prior to City Hall of, that's why our downtown looks quite nice. And then, I'm definitely leaning May. And with the also needing to do what Derek and the rest of you are saying, we have to be responsible with what-ifs and let people know that there is a possibility. But I think financially, it's almost, almost irresponsible to not put it on the ballot in May, if it costs so little to do so. If it is too expensive to re-cost or get another bid, then so be it. But I do like honoring the work of the previous committees, the long-range facilities, the BACs in the four years of at least giving it the, the chance for very minimal tax dollars or work to do so. Going in November costs more money, probably won't be done well, so. And everybody, I've been hearing from, it's like, please, please, you know, just put it on in May. Please go for the middle school. And I would agree with them. That's my thoughts.
Well, since you asked.
I demand it, Owen. Speak.
I'm not at all optimistic about our chances of success in May. That being said, if that's what we decide to do, I'm, I'm all in and support. And would give every effort to that. I think that would be a good thing for our district to get past that bond. No, no question of mind about that. I would, I agree also that November doesn't make sense to me for the reasons that you guys already said. If we were gonna wait longer, and I think waiting longer, and I just cringe to think of having our community put all that effort back in again for the, not just the second time, this would be at least the third time in ten years, but, and not to get anything out of it. It's a crazy thought. If we were gonna wait, I would like to see us at least go out for an eight, six or eight million dollar bond, get a six million dollar match, fix our high school, take six million dollars and do the most critical other safety things that need to be done. And at least not waste that awesome grant. I don't know if that's at all possible, but that, to me, I think is something that probably, I don't know, maybe it would have a chance passing. I don't know if it would or not, but, and pay that bond off in a very short time period. But that's kind of a crazy idea that I don't think is, I didn't really wanna say it, but I know I said it. So I, I would be in favor first, I guess, of, of May and trying to get a middle school passed.
I, I got a question, just for basically my own information. It was talked about that on the middle school, that rebuild, remodel, whatever you wanna call it, was gonna be, gonna take a year longer, seven million less. What did that entail? Was that redoing the, the old part too, or was that tearing down the old part and putting something in its place? What, what was the scenario?
Yeah, it was remodeling it while the kids are still there.
Right.
So moving kids, all of that. And then, once the kids, what, so, yeah, that's what.
There was a tear down of the nineteen thirty-eight.
That, that's what I was wondering. So, cause, I mean, I mean, I'm no contractor or anything, but to me, visually, it seemed like, makes sense. You tear it down, build something there, move kids out of one wing, move them in there, bring that wing up, and then, that, that was gonna be the process.
That's what it was, yeah.
Okay.
And it would've been something like forty months.
Almost four years.
Yeah. Which I think is.
Wasn't palatable.
Wasn't palatable to the community.
Yeah.
And I think that also the discussion was, when you straggle it out that long, there's gonna be changes in cost, and maybe it ends up at the end of the day, costing more for a replacement.
Okay, okay. Well, that, and that's, that's what I wanted to know in more particulars, because it was said, it was seven million cheaper, so I'm thinking, okay, well, that's seven million, that, which isn't pocket change, to throw around, but what trade-off was, and that's what I wanted to do.
Yeah, it's really a rounding, a rounding error.
And, and the architect said that anytime you're, you know, going into a building, you could find something that's gonna cost you a whole lot more.
Well, I was just looking at where we could get quarters out of a sofa. But, but I, well, I said it before, I, I think May and, and maybe go that, I guess I'll call it right now, middle road, that amount, you know, to get around. I think that's sellable and gives us some, and I hear what you're saying, Scott, about it being a slippery slope, and it is, as far as, you know, if the priority list is that, you know, we got ten schools and out of what we have over the middle school costs, three of them don't get touched, well, then that's three communities that, and I, I hear that, but by the same token, shouldn't we be trying to do what we can and think we can sell, get as much as we can done, and then?
Phil, kinda add on. I was thinking about that as well. You know, we just looked at some of the voting information where folks said it was too high and that bond was gonna touch all schools. And I don't know if this is one of Owen's considerations, if we look at just building a middle school and doing nothing with any other schools, are the rural schools, K-38s, who won't necessarily directly benefit from that, gonna vote for that? So is it worth looking at potentially a higher price number, maybe doing something at the high school? Because that is where, at some point, you know, with the assumption that people stay here, their kid will at least benefit at that future date. And that's a little bit higher price point, but then, I think, as a, as a board, we could say, hey, in good faith, we understood, we have to do the middle school. We're not able to touch every community like we originally wanted to, and you've told us that was unacceptable, but here's something where there still is some benefit in the future for your kid that's gonna directly benefit. So I'd kinda put that out as a, as a thought and a conversation, where we're kinda discussing, like, what level or what ask we may put to the voters in May.
The high school's really important to protect our investment. I mean, every time it rains, they're putting the garbage cans out in the gym to catch the leaks. The roof is leaking like a sieve. And so, so I, I think that's more pressing than maybe than trying to think of a whole district.
Question I've had when we're talking roof here, are we talking the old, what I call the old part, the first phase one? Is that what we're talking when we talk new roof here, or are we talking roof?
I think it's the whole roof.
Okay.
Yeah. Because of the cost. I, I believe it's the whole roof.
And we have to protect this investment to never, again, because every child.
But, so does this roof have issues also?
Oh, that was leaking last time I was.
Yeah.
They're placing tiles. You can see the watermarks.
Okay.
And I mean, and you have to protect it at all costs, because otherwise then.
Oh, no, I was just, I was just, because the newer wing isn't, roof-wise, isn't all that old, so that's why I was wondering.
And that, that's one of the, the BAC was really committed to using higher quality materials that might last longer the next, on, on that go-around. And that's why we have that in our guiding principles as well.
Right, we put that in the guiding principles.
Yeah, if we don't, if we don't protect our investment, we'll be nickled and dimed to death. I mean, a hundred fifty thousand dollars to fix the James Street side on a facility we don't want. The cost of a teacher's a hundred ten thousand, so.
That's a great point, too, also, in the whole, why we gotta get out of the middle school, because, again, we keep dumping six figures a year into that place. That's fiscal responsibility in my part, especially when we got a reserves now that it's down to a six-figure line. You know, how much more of the reserves are we gonna take away to dump into that building, the fact we're really bleeding down to nothing?
Well, do, do we have amongst us, do we have a field for which the community can be more supportive of if we just do a bond that just covers the middle school? Or if we have a bond that has the middle school and then a little extra where, where that goes to high school or?
That goes to my question to basically Jennifer and Scott, what our timeline is. Like, because I'm, I'm kinda, Owen, I'm not, not exactly like super punk. I've had plenty of people in the rural community say, we're fine if it's just a middle school. It's not that we don't support the middle school. Okay, we'll find out.
Yes, that, and that's, that's my.
Because I've heard people say, we're not opposed to the bond, yet we're gonna actively try to take it. So like, I don't know who to believe anymore.
And I think at this point, we have to go with the information we have right now.
So do we have enough time to poll people, like, would you be opposed if we try to get the roof done?
I, I think we're getting into a difficult area there.
Yeah.
You know, to do true scientific polling. We don't have the financial.
No, but in our own community, like, I know that Hillary had mentioned, how do we get the noes to the table? Is there no way in a possible time?
I think that's for a big future revamp of a bond. I think that's what she means.
So we don't have time?
I don't think so. I don't think we have resources.
I don't think you'd get reliable data, just.
No, agreed.
You know, we have thousands of people that live in this community and, and without doing, you know, professional scientific polling, I don't, I don't, I don't think you're gonna get reliable information.
So, back to the timeline question for you guys.
We have two months.
For us, as a board, to say, this is what we would like to?
Well, I guess my question to you as a board is, what information do you need from us to boost your confidence in a decision, May, not May? What types of things would you need from us? Because we, we do need to know which way the board wants to go so we can start preparing.
I, I, I guess, to me, I don't need to know about May or not May. I, I, I'm, I feel exactly the same way as Owen in terms of, I'm not super hopeful. But I think that it would be a mistake not to take the opportunity. And as far as, so for me, the, the dollar amount is the most important piece. And to me, getting it as low as possible, not lower than the current level, but, you know, it, it, what, can the current level get us a middle school? And if so, can it get us anything more, like the roof on the high school? That's basically what I wanna know.
Yeah, I, I, it's either May or you're gonna have to wait a few years. Paperwork's already done. We just gotta file the paperwork again. You know, the estimates have been done for the middle school, the high school, or other projects, if we wanted to.
I guess.
And, and, and this, the high, this high school is, is the, the prime asset in this district, and it's well taken care of. And I, and I think, and I, I think maybe some values we gotta, you know, I, I know we, previous bonds, thirteen, fourteen, we went from doing the, doing a new middle school, and we lowered the standards, went for something cheaper, a modular construction. I sometimes wonder if there's a different, a different method of construction that could be explored.
We just don't have time for that, yeah.
Very, yeah, exactly, but I mean.
Next time.
Yeah, next time.
Well, but you know, I mean, hey, we got seventy-five, we got seventy million dollars, let's hire this guy over here instead of that guy there. You know, you, you could still switch to modular or some other method, couldn't you?
I think that would take way more time and resources than we have for May.
I have those same questions.
Well, no, we...
After the bond is passed.
After the bond, we don't have...
We haven't hired anybody.
We haven't hired anybody to build...
Plans.
Today, the building could be pink or green.
There's no architect, but, and, you know, I, I think we can explore that thought, but... Trying to think of where I was going with that. And, you know, I mean, I'll say something to offend some people, gift some people to talk about Facebook, but if we're worried about the rural people voting no on it, well, they voted no in very large numbers on this current one.
That's right.
And, and the biggest data input I saw was, it was too expensive, so we're lowering the cost.
That's right, and we're gonna see what happens.
And there's a cost to that, there's a cost to lowering the cost, is we don't touch to the communities that we wanted to the first government.
I mean, I'll be offensive again, oh, no, they might vote no, I mean, they already did at two point five to one, so...
I guess my concern about the modular thing is that if we're trying to, we are, if we go with May, it sounds like we're gonna go with...
I'm leaning there.
The plan, the, the plan that's already been made, and to say that this is the plan, and then to change it.
We can lower that, we can get six million dollar grant, which is not for nothing, but...
I think one of our guiding principles was longevity of the facilities, and would we get the same type of longevity out of modulars as we would with the, you know, stereotypical brick and mortar?
I want to clarify the language, why modulars does work, it means we're referring to prefabrication, 'cause some people think mods, not mod cities times five. It's a bunch, you build a majority of the walls and the structures off-site to lower the cost of prevailing wages, and you ship them here and you stand them up and put them together.
And, and let me, let me be clear, I'm not, I was not making a specific suggestion. It was just like, we do, we can maybe evaluate other construction.
Right, correct.
Getting ahead of ourselves on that.
Yeah, and, because I do not want to get the cart in front of the horse, I guess, but I guess it's, we have a beautiful high school, every student in this district gets to share it. And it's, it's, every time, I've been on the board for over twelve years, every high school presentation is wonderful. Every single one of them, I'm so grateful for that. But, you know, and I, I'm not quite sure what the standards, what level of standards were at the high school, but maybe we, maybe we have to lower the, maybe the community as a whole on all of our buildings has to lower our standards a little bit for the rest of our facilities, but we all get to share this really bitchin' high school. So, anyway.
Well, even if you look at this high school, it's built with different construction methods, different parts of it are built with different construction methods. So I think, I think at the time it comes down to actual design, we can instruct our architect and our engineer to evaluate whether or not there's cost savings, maybe to build some parts of it conventionally, maybe to build other, say, wings, for example. Because, you know, we went, I, I don't know if you went, Tom, I went to Blazer Industries, along with a group of other board members, and met with the owner, and, and we looked at, you know, what, what opportunities there might be. And, you know, we really didn't find advantages at that time, there's been some changes. Like you said, there's, you know, you can avoid some prevailing wages, because factory workers don't get paid prevailing wage, and those are factory workers building walls, but there's also some disadvantages. So there's places where it works and places where it doesn't. And I, to me, I see that as something we can explore as an opportunity, that there may be some, some savings there. We may find out that there's not, too. But worst-case scenario, like Jennifer said, we've gotta have enough money to build the building. And so I think we have to plan for worst-case scenario.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then we can fine, fine tune it. And the other thing is also, and to help with the savings on buildings and stuff, is, is what that building looks like as far as functionality. And that's where, that's where your teachers, principals, and stuff come into play. They, they know, they know what a workable classroom size is, they know how many classrooms they need for X amount of students, and this sort of thing. And the best example in our own district is, and I, out there in the world, I may step on somebody's toes, toes here, but Robert Frost is the worst design ever as far as utilization of money. There is so much space there that cannot be utilized very efficiently. And that's not fault of the people that are in it now, or anything like that. But you've probably got double, you've probably got just as much space in what I call open areas there as you do in classrooms. You know, that's got a roof over it. And so you gotta stay away from, make sure we're staying away from those kinda...
Architect's dream, we're not gonna be an architect's dream.
Well, not reflective of the educational philosophy of today.
Yeah.
Ants knows a suffering from that, too.
Yeah, 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 and yeah, Scott said, the, the thing of the day, and so, and maybe we can, you know, wouldn't it be great if we had seventy-five million and only needed sixty-five of it, and there was some left, you know? I mean, that's a pipe dream, I'm sure, but...
So, yeah, I guess for me, I would, I, I wanna know if, if, where those, those cost levels are. So a lot, a lot of like the, the work Steve already did with, with Piper Sandler, and then maybe we have to consult the Wenaha again about, you know, are you sure that this number's still gonna work, or whatever?
It would be just updates on what we already have, basically.
Yes.
Wouldn't be reinventing.
Yeah, and I don't know, yeah, and, and maybe they say, oh, yeah, your seventy-five number's still gonna work, or maybe it's not gonna work.
Yeah, we can, we can talk to Cassie and Jonah immediately, and we'll know how this conversation went, and we need a, another, another look at the numbers for, for a May, if, if that's, you know, just so we have the numbers to discuss.
Would we have those prepared by, I don't, it's not much time to the December board meeting.
We'll see what they say.
We can see, yeah.
Another question that I had about that, and maybe, maybe I'm opening a can of worms, but I'll be going to do what Owen said. I know that that seventy-five number included the redo of the shops, the maintenance shops that are on campus? And is that absolutely necessary for the design of the middle school?
It seems to me that, I mean, it's already in a, in a tough spot, it got boxed in.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
But because part of the, you know, building the new school was recessed north off of Schleter, I don't even think it would, it could exist where, where it is, so...
Yeah, it was moved, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
In concept, they, they stuck a new little shop basically next to the, to the district office, between the, the office and the... Which wouldn't necessarily have to be the landing spot, but I do think it needs to be...
Somewhere else.
Somewhere.
Yeah, just, just making sure.
Well, that's a great, yeah, a great point. I know there were some things that they still wanted to do, or need, felt like was needed to do to the middle school. Even though we, we had the seismic rehabilitation, I think there were some things they needed to do. I'd like to reevaluate what that was, I don't remember what the cost was associated with it. And it seemed like, I, I think that's really important, but it seems to me that there was kind of a, an auxiliary gym option, and that was gonna be the first thing that would, would go away, if the money wasn't there.
Got it.
That seemed to be the, the most material piece of, I guess, you know, potential, hey, if we, if it works, great, if it doesn't. I, it seems to me that I need to, to go back and ask them, but that seems to be the thing that...
And so maybe that's a question, too, that if that was the amount that would get us to the even tax rate, you know, that would make sense to go forward.
Close, close to it.
So we will investigate that. And of course, we meet once a week with board chairs, and so we'll give you a progress report, probably by our meeting on Thursday. I think what I'm looking for at the December board meeting is a little bit more firmed up on where you wanna go. Because at that point, we have to fully commit resources.
When do we need to, yeah, make that like motion and make a decision like that, the next meeting?
I think December.
Well, December, gonna do the...
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
I would just like as much information ahead of time for research-wise, to make a informed decision as possible.
When's the last, December meeting would be the last opportunity to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're really...
Well, in terms of the awesome grant, which would basically then be the kind of the go-no-go generally now, I, I do need to hear back from Leanna in terms of, you know, if it's a, you know, a board vote that, you know, there, we're gonna move forward and we think it's this amount, but could we modify, you know, that type of thing? I need to get, get that back from her, which will get...
Yeah, that'll be valuable information.
But I'm trying to think of how we can modify it.
Right, well, in terms, it says anticipated amount on the application, so would, would they allow us to change it?
And you also gotta say the number of buildings affected.
And then, you know, that's, that's why the December thing comes up. In terms of the filing, I believe the filing deadline is, is March first, which would mean the, the formal resolution like we passed at the end of July. You pass one in June to say, yes, we're going out, we accept the BAC's recommendation, which then allowed us to apply for awesome by the June fifteenth deadline, I believe it was at the time. And then there was a formal resolution done July twenty-fourth, because we had to file our SEL by, it was August eighteenth, so in this case, that's what that March first date is. So, so basically, I think there would be a commitment for what we think an amount's going to be in December. Hopefully, they would allow us to change it, we'll get that clarification in the next couple days. And then as far as the filings, that formal resolution would have to take place no later than, than February, you know, to be able to file the SEL paperwork to, to the state.
Gosh, don't you know so much more about this now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just a final thought.
Can I take a public comment tonight, Gene? Thanks, though.
Madam Chairman, I request to speak.
We're not doing public comment tonight, sorry, Gene.
Well, you two guys should surely use some help, everything you've talked about is gonna get voted down.
Gene, we're not taking any comments, thanks.
Not taking a public comment. End of story.
We, we can take your email.
I was gonna say, I think if we go out in May and it fails, we're no worse off as far as like getting the facilities dealt with than we are right now. And so I think that's kind of the, the governing piece I keep coming back to, is like, would we be in a better position or a worse position? And I think the other piece of the puzzles we need to figure out is what is critical? You know, we're on a pretty short timeline, so are we just gonna focus on the middle school? Or the middle school plus, and if it's plus, what is that? It sounds like most likely roof at the high school, those are the most critical needs. And then also that tangible piece for like the whole community, so just a kind of a final thought, just to bring it back, like...
Well put, I agree.
Yep, way to think about it.
Well, thanks, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
So, without objection, we need a adjournment.